Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 12th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of the Selectmen. It's April 12th, 2022. This will be a hybrid meeting, so I'm going to, that is, we'll be doing business both in person as well as on Zoom. So I'm going to read this notice. So bear with us. This is to formally advise that as required by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting Tuesday, April 12th, 6:00 PM in the hearing room at Yarmouth Town Hall on Route 28 South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or to participate via the alternative public access that has been identified in our agenda. This is a meeting will be held by Zoom, and that information is on our website So I'd like you to join the board in a pledge of allegiance. I would like to take a moment. If you could all join the board in a moment of silence to reflect and remember on the service of Officer Sean Gannon, who served our community and lost his life four years ago today. Let us all think of Officer Gannon and all those in uniform who put their lives on the line every day for the people of this country. Thank you very much. So we're added a new item on our agenda. It's called public announcements. So for those of you who are watching at home, those of you who are in the audience, I would like you to pay close attention to upcoming changes in the polling location. We'll talk about them in a little bit detail later on this evening. We have a public hearing, but they involve those who vote precincts 5, 6, and 8. So please stay tuned. There'll be some changes coming up, and we'll be announcing the details of them shortly. Another public announcement, a reminder. Our annual town meeting is going to be on April 26th, and it will be starting at 6:00 PM, so please make a notation. And another brief announcement is Governor Charlie Baker was here in Yarmouth today, and he was at the Yarmouth Police Department, the Gannon Training Center. And today, the governor came to Yarmouth so that he could sign into law what is referred to as Nero's Law. And this is a law that allows for more direct care and ambulance service to canines that are injured in the line of duty. So I thought it was quite fitting that the governor be here. He was quite eloquent in his remarks, and he honors us all with his presence today. And it was a wonderful event on a very difficult day. So I just want to publicly thank the governor on behalf of everyone here in Yarmouth for being here and his active support for this law and getting it enacted. I don't have any other public announcements, but I'm going to ask the board members, do you have any announcements that should be shared with the community tonight? No? Okay, thanks. Let's go first to public comments. And Joyce Flynn, please.
Thank you, Joyce Flynn. Here to remind you that time is running out on the Solarize Plus Yarmouth program. And because our phone from the town keeps filling up on voicemail with longish questions, what I'd suggest as the fastest way to get in touch right now is to use the phone and text. The number you can text is our Yarmouth Solarize phone, and it's 508-776-1914. Just remember the year that World War I started. Okay, so I hope anybody interested will call. We discovered in our checking back with people that one person got fooled by a place with a similar name and bought from another solar dealer and paid much more. But we want you all to get the discount if you can do it in the next month. It's fine to tell Solar Wolf or South Shore Climate Control for the heat pumps that you say you don't want them to do a visit to your house till May or June. That's fine if you have a really busy spring planned, but you have to get your name on that list for the discount. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Joyce, I do have a quick question. Do you have to call you guys directly, or do you call Solar Wolf directly?
It would save us a lot of time if you called Solar Wolf directly. With a Yarmouth address, you'll get the discount. We just are aware that some people, in attempting to call Solar Wolf, so many similar names of companies called the wrong solar company. Okay? Thank you. And you can also call South Shore Climate Control directly for heat pumps. And just one thing I should add, that we are going to be having a heat pump webinar, and that's going to be April 20th. And that's going to be co-sponsored by Solarize Yarmouth and the Cape Light Compact. And we're going to go over all the new incentives for heat pumps with the three-year energy efficiency period with state programs that just started this January. So you can also text if you want to be on the Zoom invite list for that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other people here seeking recognition? Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is transfer of license Peterson's Market. I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to the licensing chair, Mr. Stone.
We must have taken it out of order.
Yeah, it is out of order, that's why. I think--
I'm looking at a previous version of the agenda. Let me--
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we had this on the original agenda. We had you up front, sorry.
He's not sad about it, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, here it is. Okay. Hey, you want to introduce yourself, then I'll read the public notice, and then we can proceed from there, please.
My name is Jeff Blankenship, and I'm the general manager of Peterson's Market.
Okay, and so this is the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application for a transfer of an annual all-alcohol package store license, pledge of inventory and pledge of license from Brookhill Farms LLC, Jeff Blankenship, manager. The license is being transferred from Smithfield Market of Yarmouth Port, Brian Smith, manager. The premise located at 918 Route 6A Yarmouth Port is 7,050 square feet of retail space for grocery and liquor sales, one entrance/exit in front of a second entrance/exit in the rear for deliveries. The pledge of license and inventory is being made to Smithfield Market of Yarmouth Port LLC. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 Friday, April 8th, 2022, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay. Why don't you tell us briefly what's involved in this transaction and what you wish us to do?
I'm looking to purchase Peterson's Market and transfer the license over to me. I've been managing it for 15 years, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Is there anybody out in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against this transfer? And you're looking for a pledge of inventory and a pledge of license as well, correct?
Correct.
So tell us just briefly about your experience in handling alcohol.
Yep, I've been managing Peterson's Market for 15 years now. I'm also partners in Barnstable Market in Barnstable Village, of which I am on their license. And I've been doing it for 20-something years now in the retail liquor business.
Okay, good.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. Does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the transfer as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license transfer and a pledge as requested. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do we have the mailing receipts?
I don't know if--
Would you pass those then?
Mailing receipts.
I don't know if that's--
Oh, no, this is a transfer. It's not a new license, right? Okay.
It wasn't on my checklist.
No. Correct.
Okay.
No pain cards.
Yeah. All right, so you're all set. Your application's been approved, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
So that was the next one. We gonna do that one?
Yeah, might as well go, because I think the El Mariachi--
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the El Mariachi matter, and we're going to open the hearing, and then I'm going to ask the board to make a motion to continue. What was that continuation date? It was early May?
May 3.
May 3, okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to continue this till May 3. I'll explain why, and we'll go from there. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has scheduled a show cause hearing to determine if the annual all-alcohol pouring license held by El Mariachi Mexican Family Restaurant, 416 Route 28 West Yarmouth, Mass., David Lopez, manager, should be modified, suspended, or revoked under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 1623 and 26, 204 CMR 2.05, and Section 1.01, 1.04, 1.05, 1.06, 1.08, 1.09, and 7 of the rules and regulations, Chapter 155 of the Yarmouth Town Code. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 PM. The manager-- So the meeting is now open. The manager who is identified on the license, his father passed away in Mexico, is my understanding. And there was some discussion about whether he could participate via Zoom, and I felt under the circumstances with a death in the family, we should continue to matter until he can take care of his family situation and be back. The date that was cleared, I guess through Dakota, was May 3. And so I would like to have a motion to continue this hearing until May 3 at 6:00 PM.
Motion to continue the public hearing until May 3.
At 6:00 PM.
2022 at 6:00 PM.
All right, good. You have a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So this matter is continued for hearing until May 3 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good. The next item, I'm going to go back to the public hearing on the shellfish lease application. Joel R. Boyes, DBA, doing business as Boyes Family Fisheries for a proposed aquaculture lease in Lewis Bay. All right, and let me do this. Let's read into the record the notice of the public hearing. The licensing authority of the town of Yarmouth has received a shellfish lease application from Joel R. Boyes, doing business as Boyes Family Fisheries for a proposed aquaculture lease in Lewis Bay to culture and grow out Cohogs using bottom culture in the northeast corner of Lewis Bay in the corner locations as outlined in the notice. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, Yarmouth Town Hall, Route 28 South Yarmouth. So proceed.
We're back here because made it to the next step with the state, and we did not, when we went and saw you guys in November, we did not put any public notice into the Times. So I put a public notice back into the Times about two weeks ago and got it published. And the state was mostly concerned if there was any general public opposition to this going through, you know, if anyone wanted to come and speak in opposition to it, so. But we're doing it again. Sorry to waste anyone's time here.
Very good. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to be heard on this? Okay, hearing none. Would you like to speak, Conrad?
I'm just, I'll apologize for the both of us that we didn't get the ad in time. And it ran, it's there, and the state is ready to accept it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
We have to close the public hearing.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay? Any discussion, hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, carries unanimously.
Motion to approve that petition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, carries unanimously.
All right, thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it. Sorry about that.
No problem. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, comments on change of Yarmouth polling location. And on that matter, we're going to bring the town clerk to the podium to update us on the plans.
Good evening. Mary Maslowski, for the record, town clerk. Since we last spoke last week, we did submit a survey to the state with some information about the Yarmouth Senior Center and why we thought it was a better location for these precincts by way of background. Precincts 2 and 4 currently vote at the Yarmouth Senior Center. The polling location for precincts 5 and 6, which was the Cape and Islands Realtors Building at Mid-Tech Drive off of Higgins Crawl, is unavailable for the May 17th annual town election. So that prompts us to assign a new polling location for those two precincts. And then by way of reprecincting, as you all know, we have a new precinct 8 and a subprecinct 8A, which also needs to be assigned a polling location. Precinct 8A will vote the same state ballot and federal ballot with precincts 5 and 6, so it behooves us to make sure that 8A is voting at the same location as 5 and 6. Will make it easier on our election workers and hopefully easier on the voters to make sure that everyone who needs that particular ballot will be in the same polling location. So we submitted the survey to the state. I heard back from the Elections Division this morning. She was fine with the survey that we sent in and the evaluation that we had done. We will need to put a few handicapped signs. A couple of the handicapped accessible parking spaces in the front row don't have signs in front of them. So Department of Public Works has said that they can help us and assist us with that before the May 17th election. Based on the review that we did, Ed Centio came out with me last week. That ballroom is 76 feet long and about 47 feet wide, so it provides ample space to locate each of those five precincts in that location. And it has two other rooms that are available to us. One is 50 by 50, which is adjacent to the ballroom that you don't even realize is there. It's a classroom, which is ample space for two precinct locations if we feel it is too tight when we go to set it up. And then there's additionally the solarium for, off of the kitchen, that would be available as backup space. We have the appropriate accessible automatic voting machines. We will have, hopefully, some new voting booths that will streamline the setup for us. And at this time, it feels, because of the size of the parking lot, because of the number of accessible parking spaces, because of the size of the rooms available to us, that that is really the ideal location, relatively centrally located, easily accessible from Route 28, from Station Avenue, Union Street, 6A, and Buck Island Road, that it seems like it's the appropriate place for these precincts all to be co-located. So as a part of tonight's action, we're asking that you adopt the proposed findings of fact and make the motions to assign those polling locations. Subsequent to the vote tonight, we will make all of the required postings. Under state law, we are required to post in three locations in each precinct. In addition, a mailing needs to go out to each household with a registered voter. We have delayed our census, which is ready to go out. So the census, I would state to the public that when they receive their census, your current precinct location will be in the upper left-hand corner, and all of the polling locations will be listed on the back with their precinct and their address. So that will assist us with at least one of the notices for everyone to know where they are going to be voting. In addition to that, we will do the reverse 911 telephone call, deal with social media, make sure it's on the website, and do whatever else we can. We'll also have a dedicated telephone line so that if people have questions a week or two weeks before the election, we will have one extension dedicated for people to call so that we can answer their questions for them.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make the necessary motions.
Okay, thank you. Before we do that, I'd like to at least check to see if there's anybody from the public. I can't--
I see a hand with Mr. Nick Nello, Tom.
Okay. With a smiley face. Mr. Nick Nello.
Yes. Yes, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Select Board. Tom Nickenow from the very unique village of Bass River in this very historic old town of Yarmouth. And Mr. Chairman, I may say today is a very historic day in our town, as you all know, at noontime. But the question would be today for the town clerk, is there going to be any indication at the Realtors Building that for the people to get redirected over to the Senior Center? I mean, we're a very transit community. We could have people flying in like on the 15th and not know, and they just go to the Mid-Tech Drive because that's where they go. The question was just, is there any follow-up to redirect those people to the Senior Center? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Through you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Nick Nello. We have already spoken with the Department of Public Works, and they have already offered us some sandwich boards and signage to make sure that that's available there prior to the election and Election Day that will redirect people in precincts 5 and 6 over to the Senior Center. I would just also point out to people that just because you were in precinct 5 or 6 or 2 or 1, each of the precincts did have some changes to them because of the reprecincting. So it is important that you check your census to see what your current precinct is. There were some changes in each and every precinct. So you could be on a street that is now a dividing line, and you could have jumped from 1 to 5 or from 3 to 4. So it is important, and we will make sure that we get that communication out there to people.
Again, is there anybody else from the public that is seeking recognition? We don't have anybody.
I went on TV.
Okay, nobody in the audience? Okay, let me go to the board, Selectmen post.
Mary, you said that when they receive the letter, it will be in the top left-hand corner. Will it be very visible? Is it going, they're going to understand?
It is. It has a notice that says--
I just want to make sure it wasn't like a, it gives them very clearly their number.
It has a, it has a notice in bold that says, "New precinct information." It is bolded, and then we will also have another notice written on the top that says, "Please pay attention to your precinct, your new precinct and your new polling location," which is listed on the back.
Okay.
So we'll direct their attention.
So will only people that are changing get that? Or does everybody get that?
So the census will go out to every household that has a registered voter in it. So that will cover us for the required mailing that should be going out within the next week.
So everybody who's registered?
So everybody, everybody will have their information. The accessibility regulations allow us to also do a reverse 911 call to notify people of a new polling location. So we'll be taking advantage of that as well. So we're going to hit as many different options as we can in order to make sure people are fully informed.
Thank you.
Selectmen Smith?
My question was, and I think you've already answered it, there's enough room for everybody to mill around and--
There certainly is the, that was one of the questions that the state asked me today, and I was able to tell her that it's, the ballroom itself is 76 feet by 47 feet. So we do have plenty of room for the 36-foot-wide aisleways for handicapped accessibility. So, and like I said, even if, even if we still have those 36 and we still feel it's tight, we can always open into one of the other rooms.
Excellent. Mary, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Go right ahead.
So the way that it's always been is 2 and 4 there, and it's usually split in the middle. So when you check in, you know where to bring your card back to. How, how will that work with so many precincts? Will there be one check-in and one checkout?
So you're going to have a check-in for every precinct. We're going to line up the precincts. We're not going to separate the room. The dividers are going to be pulled back, and you're going to have a check-in at the front of each line, a row of voting booths, the checkout at the end of the voting booth, and then people can circle around. So they are likely going to come in on the left-hand entrance, circle around the back, go to their precinct, go down the aisle to vote their ballot, go to checkout, process their ballot, then circle around to the right-hand side of the room, and then exit at the second door.
So they don't get mixed? The precincts to have their own, you said, process your ballot?
Correct.
So they each still have their own machine?
They have, they each have their own machine.
It's clear where they come in and where they go out, that that's where--
Yes, and we are, we are working on trying to locate enough stanchions that if possible, we can put stanchions between precincts so that it's clear. With the voting booths, the voting booths are going to open. If you, if you can picture, the check-in table will be to the left. When you come in, the voting booths will be opened. You would turn to the left to vote. The checkout table will be at the end. The next row of voting booths is not going to be facing precinct 1. It's going to be, the first precinct is going to be facing the next precinct. So we should be able to keep them in line. And that's also part of the job of our election workers and our wardens to make sure that they're paying attention to people when they're coming in and checking out.
Yeah, because for you, I know, I know how you work it with your books, and you count the check-ins and check-outs in each precincts. And you also check how many voted and how many ballots you have. So if you, if you were to have more ballots in one, then that would be--
We would know.
Right, how would you handle that, though?
So that's a, that's an issue for, for the, for the election when the numbers come through. Really and truly, we, we have poll pads now to check in with the ballots. So our check-in and our checkouts should always match our tabulators.
Okay. So you'd know, you'd catch it faster than the book, the old book tally?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Great, anybody else on the board? Great. Anybody else on the board? Mr. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the findings of fact recommended in the letter to the Board of Selectmen from the town clerk dated April 8, 2022, in items numbered one through nine, and further adopt the additional finding that said letter was posted on the town's website on April 8, 2022.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Mr. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, I further move that the Board of Selectmen vote to assign the Yarmouth Senior Center at 528 Forest Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. 02673, as a designated polling location for precincts 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, and Sub Precinct 8A for elections in the town of Yarmouth, and direct the town clerk to take any act or actions necessary on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 24, and 950 CMR 51.00, and following the regulations for polling place accessibility for elderly and handicapped voters.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for all of your time this evening. If, if you or any constituents have questions, please tell them to call our office. We're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on golf fees. I think it's a continuation. Is that correct?
Yes, second.
Correct. Second hearing. Scott, I'm going to ask you to read the hearing notice into the record, if you don't mind.
Scott Gilmore, Director of Golf, Town of Yarmouth. You know, there's Town of Yarmouth, public hearing, 2022 annual golf fees. Final hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, April 12 at 6:00 p.m. near Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 2022 proposed annual golf fees. Written comments will be accepted at selectmen@yarmouth.us until April 11. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. The board meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. For annual fees, annual pass existing fee 1,200, proposed fee 1,260. Senior annual pass, 760, proposed fee 790. Links annual pass, 330, proposed fee 345. Under 35 annual pass, under 35 years of age, 760, proposed fee 790. Young adult annual pass, under 23 years of age, $325, proposed fee 340. Junior annual pass, under 19 years of age, $110, proposed fee 115. Annual twilight pass, after 2:00 p.m., a new pass edition, it would be 790. Daily fees, Director of Golf Operations will have the authority to adjust these daily fees downward as market conditions dictate, or there is an intent to offer certain specials to increase facility service utilization. Greens fees, $105.84 is the existing fee, proposed $111.13. Golf car, 18 hole per person, pass holder is $15.44, existing, proposed $16.21. Golf car for nine holes per person, pass holder is $9.38 for existing, and proposed is $9.85. Golf car, 18 holes per person, non-pass holder is $24.25 for existing fee, proposed fee is $25.46. Golf car, nine holes per person, non-pass holder is $16 for existing, proposed fee is $16.80. Range fees, small bucket is $7.71 for existing, proposed is $8.10. Medium is $11 for existing, proposed is $11.55. Large is $13.23 for existing, proposed is $13.89. Club rentals, nine holes is $30.29 for existing fee, proposed is $31.80. Eighteen holes is $48.51 for existing, proposed is $50.94. Premium set is $74.97 existing, proposed is $78.72. And then handicap maintenance is $55 for existing, and proposed fee is $57.75.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who would like to be heard on these proposed fees? I can't make out if we have any hands raised on the Zoom.
Do not.
Okay, so there's nobody on Zoom? Okay. Is it appropriate at this time to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on closing the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay. Mr. Horgan? Yes?
Just two quick questions. Thank you for your work again. We seem to really make you guys jump through the hoops, but you, you've been very understanding, and we appreciate that very much. Just a quick question. I was noticing that the non-resident fees appear to be the same as the resident fees. I was just curious about the rationale for that.
Yeah, we decided with National Golf, and they came about three years ago, that was in our best interest to get rid of the non-resident fee as we are an enterprise account and do not have much money coming in from taxpayer funding. We were also struggling to get members at that time, and we thought it was in our best interest to put it all at one fee, where we've actually increased our membership since that time.
Are we unique in that matter, or do other towns do the same thing?
We are unique with the towns that we do that. Most of the other towns have some sort of funding from the town, which is why they do a non-resident fee.
Okay. The second question I had is, I had asked, my general concern was just to make sure that the daily fees were competitive. But the sheet you gave us, I truly had difficulty trying to even understand it. You broke it out into nine holes and various different fees for various different times. It's not really applicable for tonight's purposes, but I didn't find this helpful at all. I was really just looking for average to make sure that we were staying competitive and not overpricing ourselves and out of the market.
Yeah, I mean, this, the whole chart you see is definitely a comparison through the times. We don't have as much times as you see eight here, 11, two. Those are some of the other courses. We don't do that, where we have a one o'clock rate, we have a prime time rate, and then we do again at four o'clock. We only have three different scenarios, but other towns do it differently. But as far as the comparison, we're usually within three or four dollars between the other towns on our rates.
And I'm sure that you keep track of that and make sure that you are highly competitive. So it's really just my doing due diligence, but thank you, and I appreciate the efforts, and I'm supportive of the increase.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just to, just to point out, as Scott, you indicated, a number of the towns also underwrite the, the annual fee for the residents. So, so some of the comparisons are a little tough. So you know, it might look like some town has a little less money, but the town is underwriting some, some of those fees. I'm very much in, in favor of the, of the changes, and I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it's going to, going to put, going to put money and, and allow the golf program to flourish.
Selectman Post?
Thank you. I appreciate this information. I very much like this projection. If we can wrap our projected capital expenses in there, that would be great. But one of the things that, that you, you see on our expenses is the OPEB. There's a line, Medicare OPEB, Workman's Comp. A lot of towns don't charge their golf department for all those expenses. Everything that is a cost for personnel expenses is within their budget, which is not the case in our, our surrounding towns. So, you know, you're definitely not comparing apples to apples when, when you look at that. I just, I appreciate the work that you did on this, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have just one follow-up.
Go right ahead, Selectman Horgan.
Speaking to Ms. Post comments, understanding that we, we charge certain fees to this enterprise account, are all of our enterprise accounts treated the same way? Yes, they are. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it took us a few years. I think when Ed, Ed started that sometime back, they slowly moved some of the things. But it was one of the budget years. I remember it was a big hit to them. I mean, you can see in here their annual cost for.
Yeah, you can check it at 2017. It was pretty low.
Right.
And it jumped up pretty good.
Yeah, you can see the difference. So that was a big, that's a hundred, like $100,000 difference to the budget, that alone, for them to be basically self-sustaining.
Thank you. You said, Selectman Horgan?
That's it.
Okay. Selectman Stone? Any comments?
No comments.
Okay, great.
Does your wife have a comment?
That's not her. I don't give her my number.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the fee increase as presented.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an update. I want to make sure I'm reading the right agenda. Is it the, is it Eversource? Okay, thank you.
We're a little ahead of the schedule.
Yeah. Well, we figured we'd just have one meeting.
Did you hear what I just said?
Yeah, can you believe it?
We're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, well, knock on wood.
It's because it was the quickest liquor license hearing we've ever had.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you, Mike.
Just cut them off.
So the next item is an update from Eversource on their proposed solar project, 484 Willow Street. Is anybody from Eversource here?
I'm sending them a note if they're in the area to please.
Yeah, please, maybe they're surprised that we're well ahead of schedule. We could always revisit.
I'm surprised we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, me too. Anybody else surprised? Are we going to get that on there? Want a motion?
Yes.
Collective surprise. What I'd like to do then, let's, let's do this. Let's skip ahead. Well, we, we won't take any action, obviously, on the Eversource update. We'll just hold that until later. All right? And we'll go directly to the update and review of the 50 Workshop Road solar project.
Well, Ed just left to find Eversource.
There you go. All those in favor of this.
So moved. Be fine with that.
I noticed you might want to also alert the water department people, Robert, that they should be prepared to come early.
Do boards and committee?
Do you want to do board and committee actions? Do you want to skip ahead to that item on the agenda? This is like a real potpourri.
We can do the agenda review too, if we have, if we need.
We can do that. So for folks following us at home, we're going to be jumping ahead on our agenda well ahead because for the first time in a long time, we're actually well ahead of schedule. So I don't know how long that trend could continue, but for tonight's meeting, we're going to go to the item called Board and Committee Actions, where we take up committee appointments and so forth. So I'm going to turn this over to Selectman Smith.
We have, we have two items. The first one is from Sharon Ladley. Ms. Ladley unfortunately is going to resign from the, on the Yarmouth Disability Commission, and so we, we accept her resignation with, with regret.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
The second item is, is an appointment to the Energy Committee. The Chair of the Energy Committee and myself interviewed Ms. Flannery to be a regular member of the Energy Committee. This appointment will fill an unexpired three-year term, which will run through December 2024. It does say in the, in the Talent Bank form that she is moving here and back and forth from New Jersey, and at the interview, she says she is here now full-time. Her husband is still bouncing back and forth, but he, he will, he will, he will be here. She's a, she's an architect, and she has taken, taken advantage of the Solar Wolf, Solarise, Yarmouth, and I highly recommend that she be appointed to the committee.
And she's an architect.
And she's an architect. Yes, she is.
Old Kings Highway.
Do I have a motion in support?
So moved. I'm glad you pointed that out, because I was just about to ask.
Okay, all those in favor of this appointment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously. Any other?
Those, those are the only two items in there.
Okay.
You want to go to the consent agenda?
What I'd like to do, I see Mr. Centio has come back. He's returned. And so what I'd like to do is go back. We'll pick up Board and Committee actions in a little bit. Again, we're jumping around, so let's move to the update and review of the proposed solar project for 50 Workshop Road. So Ed, come on up.
Thank you. The only issue is folks from Amoresco aren't here.
Yeah. Okay.
We could get started, and if there are questions that they need to answer.
Well, why, I'm, let's give it a best shot with you. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job.
You guys are loing through this agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, you noticed?
Yeah.
Yes. Ed Centio, Finance Director for the Town of Yarmouth. So we'll, the package is thick. We wanted to provide a lot of pictures, but we'll, we'll try to move through this fairly quickly and get to your questions.
He's given us plenty.
It's not enough.
But it's also important that the folks at home who are following this presentation, they get pictures as well.
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot of interest in this site.
Okay, great. The reason why we're looking at these types of opportunities is, as you know, we tried to present to the public a wastewater project that was funded by taxes, and that was rejected, and this was several years ago. As a result, we were charged with trying to come up with ways to fund wastewater by not increasing the real estate taxes. And as you know, running the Assessors Department as well as the Collector Treasurers Department, I see a lot of people that do have trouble with increased taxes, and we try to work out things with them. So there is some, some problems for some people, and I'm going to be the last department head that's a resident of the Town of Yarmouth pretty soon. And so I'm in Yarmouth 24, seven most weeks, and also interact with my neighbors and others. And some of those folks also can't afford to have all of this burden put on their taxes. So this is why I understand why we need to come up with these types of revenues to help out those types of folks. So we've restarted to receive short-term rental income. Bob has proposed something on town meeting to, you know, secure that for our debt service. But in the meantime, what we'll be doing is utilizing free cash, as we did last year, and we'll need to do that for FY '22 revenues as well. Cape Cod Water Protection Trust, that's, once we have our SRF approval, then we can tap into that money, and this considerable amount of money that was put into that fund from the Town of Yarmouth. The board and staff put in place the CPA exemption shift, which is now used for the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. So a lot of these things are actually falling into place. The septic hose fee, we've been allocating. The septic hose fee, we've been allocating, not formally, but informally as part of an annual vote. And some of these types of things, we need to have a more formal policy in place to secure these funds for debt service. We received federal infrastructure money, $3.1 million that we'll be utilizing for this project. Bill and other folks are working hard on obtaining grants to help out with the project. New growth, we have a formula that we're using until the diff is put in place, again informal, and it's going to be formalized. Betterments are being worked on. And then we're looking at the land sales and leases to actually help with some additional funding. And there's other ideas that we've been tossing around to try to help out with the funding as the price of the project has increased over time. So one of the opportunities we're talking to you today about, and we got into it a little bit last meeting, is the solar battery anaerobic digestion piece, calling it the Cape Cod Energy Park. There was a small initial solar project that was approved by the Board at the same location. What we're talking about today is the second solar project. And hopefully soon, we'll be talking to you about the anaerobic digester and how that can benefit not only our bottom line, but as Selectman Forrest indicated, we need to have opportunities to dispose of our bio solids from all of the treatment plants in the region, as well as do something better with food waste rather than incinerating or putting that into landfills. And that's what that project's about. What we've done today is we've got a 30-year lease approval for the property for this purpose. The RFPs were submitted in 2020. We actually got an RFP response in 2018, but our prior town administrator wanted to redo it. And then we did it again. And, you know, we're still hopefully looking to get some of the revenues we could have gotten from either of those two proposals. We, solar proposal we received, we selected the most economically beneficial proposal to the town. We're going to explain some things later, but we lost a block and tranche, which had more favorable incentives for us. So the pre-funding over a 20-year period now looks like $7.5 million, and that's lease only. That's not counting the benefits that will go to the low-income rate holders and revenue that we'll get from a battery. Just looking at the environmental benefits of this project, 5,084 metric tons, and this is per year of carbon dioxide reduced. It's equivalent to taking 1,098 cars off the road. And the carbon, this is equivalent to the carbon sequestered, you know, 6,639 acre, you know, set of forest, and that's again, per year. As I indicated earlier, pending a DPU order going through, this will actually fund and provide revenues to the Cape Light Compact. What they'll do is provide reduced rates to low-income families in town so that they can do some things with their, or, you know, manage their electric bills a bit better than they can now. We looked at potentially taking money from the lease revenue, $10,000 a year, for example, and utilizing that to plant trees throughout the town. This gives you an indication of where this particular site is. It's kind of an industrial type site where we have a solid waste. Where we have a solid waste facility, that's the Yarmouth Barnstable Regional Commercial Site in the middle. On the left, Yarmouth site now, not Barnstable. Yes. We have a Yarmouth septic facility. That second name has been dropped as well. And the large white building is a building that's, except for maybe an eighth of that building has been vacant for 30 years. And that's where we're looking to hopefully take advantage of the anaerobic digester by putting that in place. And then the area to the right of the 10-million-gallon tank where the locus is for the 50 Workshop Road, you can see solar panels on top of that, but the solar farm would be to the left and right of that particular location, just to give you an idea. And you can see the Feed and Seed Mitsubishi we're stationed at. This is a potential look of the solar farm. And what we're going to do is go through, based on the numbers, some visuals of what you can see from each one of those points. So you have a reference of what you want to include or wouldn't want to include in a lease offering. So image number one, and you'll see the numbers here. We're going to start with 1, 2, 3, go through that. So this is a visual from Station Ave, the Mitsubishi Car Dealership. There are, it's heavily treed at the beginning of this property or behind the Mitsubishi Car Dealership. So that won't be, you won't see solar panels from from that particular vantage point.
Even in the winter?
This is all.
Evergreens.
Evergreens, sorry. Wow.
Stay green forever. That's why they call them evergreens.
This is the location, again, just to give you an idea, location number two. This is where the former Cape Cod Bank was. We're moving on. Sorry. This is where the Feed and Seed is, again, blocked by buildings and and trees. This is where, if you were to go onto Workshop Road from this location, and if you're driving towards it, this is on the left, this is the back of the orthodontist and health location. Moving forward, you're starting to look at the rail trail. This is where the clinic is on 50 Workshop Road. And I just wanted to bring you back to this picture because then we're going to go and start looking at number seven. And this is where the gated area that prevents other folks from coming in here. This is just for the transfer of solid waste as well as septic. This would be a view that you would see from that area. The people that work there are town employees and are contractors. This is a location where, as you continue to move forward, so you'll notice that the 10-million-gallon tank, the large concrete building, that's something you're not able to see from Route 6. You're not able to see that from Station Ave. There are certain areas where you can actually see it, but it's difficult. So the solar panels are at a level below the tank. This is one area where you can see the solar panels. This is, would be at the back most parking location for the orthodontist and the the doctor's offices. You know what, I actually go to that doctor's office. Not a lot of people park there, but that's something that you can see. But this is, and I just want to give you an idea of where that is. So now we're looking at number 10, kind of going around the, you know, coming off of Route 6, that exit. So that's this particular area. Again, you can't see the 10-million-gallon tank here. This is highly bermed, you know, going up. So, you know, it's tough to see over that hump of that particular location. And then this is, as you go down that location even further. So if you're not seeing that 10-million-gallon tank from this vista, you're not going to be able to see the solar panels. This is some information about Amoresco, some of their bona fides, some of the projects that they've worked for and the size of their organization. They've also been picked for the DPW Garage and for the Fire Station Solar Projects. Really big player in this, in this space. Again, additional information about Amoresco. But I wanted to indicate that you saw some numbers in the previous presentations. We lost Block and Tranche. That was one of the first ones offered. What could also decrease the revenues would be the loss of additional blocks and tranches and/or the reduction in the investment tax credit that's scheduled to expire on 12/31/2022. Just to give you an idea of what all of those definitions mean, block and tranche. So these are all part of the SMART program, the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Energy Target, where they're looking to reduce greenhouse gases within Massachusetts. So a block is part of the SMART program. And once people have submitted for 76 megawatts of solar, that block goes away, the incentives get reduced, and then you get into the next lower block as you move forward. A tranche is 80 megawatts of solar. And this particular tranche is related to the low-income solar projects as well as any project that utilizes a battery, which this particular project is going to use. So that's what those definitions mean. And then we're going to go through some scenarios where this comes up. And if anybody has any questions about that, please let me know. So these are kind of incentive layers that the state has come up with with the electrical companies that say, you know, if you get in early, you get better incentives. If the later you get in, the lower the incentives are for actually the amount of electricity you can sell and the beneficial rates that you'll get from that electricity.
Mr. Chairman?
But.
Selectman Smith has a quick question.
Ed, what does get in mean? Does it mean it has to be online or does it have to be?
You have to submit your application and get into that reserve for that particular project.
But you don't have to be online and producing power. You just have to get in, get in line?
Right.
Okay.
And actually, Amoresco will come in. I think you have to submit an application. It has to, you know, have all of, you know, certain pieces in place. And I'm not sure what all of those pieces are. And, you know, hopefully we can come back to that question when the other folks hear. What's the benchmark?
Yeah, let's stop here for just a second and see if other board members have questions about the material that's been presented so far. I think what is important is to make sure that we're all clear on the layout and that the visual analysis really shows, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but the information that you're presenting to the Board is that visual impacts from, from most of the venues, the visual impacts are minimal at at all. The only place where you can see it is behind that healthcare clinic. But otherwise, there are no visual impacts.
Right.
Is that a fair? Am I missing something?
I believe so. That is fair. Thank you.
In this particular case here, have you considered any lower shrubbery?
That's a possibility, you know, additional costs.
That would be the only, I think that would be the only place.
You would have to probably, because there's a depression there, you'd have to put it on the customer's lot. And I don't, we can't, you know, do that. So, you know, that would be part of the difficulty.
What's the depth on the other side of the fence, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. But, you know, you could put shrubbery that would be tall enough to try to block that lower, if that was important.
Well, I happen to think that being a good neighbor and finding ways to minimize visual impacts is always a good thing with these projects. I, I think from my point of view, I'm just thinking long-term. I think if we can take an approach where we're looking to mitigate impacts as much as we can, I think that will only inspire folks to have more confidence in doing these kinds of projects. If they know that we want to do more solar and that we're very sensitive to these issues, then I think to some degree we'll be able to get more support. That's why I think it's really important to just sort of get this out there, get the, get an opportunity for the public to see this, see what the impacts are. I think if there are ways to even mitigate that, I think we should be open to it, particularly if there's an issue and a concern by the the neighbors. I'm assuming that in developing a project like this, that there are going to be other board approvals and there are other site plan reviews.
Right. You know, involve the public for their comment on whether or not there are issues. But yeah, as you indicated in both, a few of you have indicated, we could get some fairly large evergreens that would grow up or could be of that height.
I think we're pretty lucky, actually, looking at these renderings to see such a significant amount of solar with really one property impacted. I mean, typically, you're looking at a whole area of mitigation. I think that this, to Mark's point, would be be a good neighbor. And, I mean, maybe they don't, maybe they're not of interest of that. They probably don't mind. But out of all the pictures, that's the only one. I mean, driving along the road into that, into that facility, I'm, I'm not concerned of. But, but this, and you know what, they did a nice job with that building. And they've, they've, you know, they've done some landscaping and it'd be nice to keep it nice for them. But I think that's a small.
Bob Lawton and others actually picked that location for a reason, and that was, let's put a solid waste facility, you know, off the beaten track, pretty much. Let's put a septic facility off the beaten track, but close to the, close to the exit. And that's why I think this particular area is, is, is a good location for this particular type of project.
Okay. Anybody else, before we go any further on the economics and the numbers and the the other dimensions of this? Selectman Horgan, did you have any comments on what's been presented so far?
The only concern I had was that one site and seems to be a willingness to work with that, so.
I mean, we have to work, we have to talk with the other folks, see what the cost implications are. I don't know, because that's our site. Would, would that be something where we might use some of the tree money to replace some trees? You know, that would be a way to, you know, kind of make this whole thing work.
Yeah, again, I think I, I'd just like to suggest that our approach should be long-term.
Perfect.
That if we approach these projects as good neighbors, looking to mitigate any kind of visual impacts where we can, I think we should be open to that. And if that's the attitude and that's the policy and the approach of the Board, I just think it creates more receptivity to people in the community, because there are lots of folks who, you know, have seen some projects develop, not just here, but in other communities, that have expressed some real concerns about doing this. And there's growing tension among conservation groups and solar developers. And I think I'd like Yarmouth to be a place where we can have a win-win, where you could do solar and be mindful of trees and vegetation and the aesthetics.
Yeah, we can, we can do something. I'll talk with Jeff and I'll talk with Amoresco, see what we, Jeff Colby and.
If there's any more that can be, yeah, I think that's worth looking at. Yeah. Selectman Stone?
I agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I would add to that, too, is you never know what the change of use of a particular facility is going to be in terms of the screening. I mean, you, you may say, well, it's appropriate for this type of a business or this type of a facility. That could change going forward. So I think we should be looking for maximum mitigation, as Tracy, I think, kind of indicated. And treat any, any location that's going to have any kind of view of the facility respectfully.
I just want to ask a couple more questions, and I'm maybe getting ahead. We're going to talk about Amoresco and that process after this.
I just wanted to make sure that we review and comment on what we.
I have questions about that, but I'll wait.
Yeah, let's, let's get that presentation first.
On the lower income, it's not a subsidy, so to speak, but the lower income assistance that a residence will benefit from, is that the same project that we were talking about? Weren't the people with, on, on Willow Street that were putting up the, the solar, was that part of that project as well?
Yes.
Yes. So.
Over the, EverSource has an element of low income.
So is that the same program? Are they two separate programs?
I think it's the same program.
It's the same program. So Cape Light Compact will also manage that. So this doesn't impact that at all. It just adds more, okay.
Adds more revenue to the ability to lower electric rates. And we're one of the highest electric rates in the country.
I know. I think we all know.
I know. Anybody else? Okay, Ed, please continue.
Just to give you some options to scale down the project, if, if you felt that that was appropriate, you'll see some pictures that show a 50-foot buffer on sections A and F, and I'll point out where those are.
Okay.
So if you see to the right where it says Array 1, Section ABF, that's a 50-foot buffer could be added there. Then if we go back, the 50-foot tree buffer and not doing Array 3, which is Section C, that's where you can see it from that back parking lot. The third option is a 50-foot tree buffer. And we would also, we would not construct on Section C, and we'd also not construct on Section D, which wraps around the 10-million-gallon water tank. Sorry.
What was, what, just so we're clear, the visuals that you gave us was with what option? None of these options, correct?
Which one?
The visuals that we just saw?
This one, that's the 50-foot.
Okay.
But the other visuals, the initial visual, was doing the entire location.
Okay.
Right, all of the shots from the roadway were based on the original configuration.
Right.
All right, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, as long as that little area was mitigated.
Yep. And then 75-foot buffer and don't construct on Section C, you'll be able to see the economics of that, of those different changes. And I'm not going to go through this in a lot of detail, but, and I'm just going to go through one if, unless you want to go into this in detail. This shows the system size, the block and tranche that's now available for the project, what the first-year revenues would be, what the 20-year total revenues would be. And then if we lose additional blocks and/or tranches, how much the revenue would be decreased over time, based on where we are with our submission. And I'm not going to go through this unless you want to. So this is the summary of the different options. The first option is the 5.7 megawatts, megawatt option. And this would be utilizing the town-required setbacks for a project like this. That would be approximately $7.5 million over 20 years. The 4.6-megawatt system would result if we had a 50-foot tree buffer, and that would be 5.6, 5.7 million dollars per year. 4 megawatts would result if we did the 50-foot buffer and we took away Section C, where the back parking lot is for the, that business that we discussed, the businesses that we discussed. 75-foot tree buffer and Section C removed would be down to 4.4 million approximately. And then if you went with a 50-foot buffer and you remove Section C and D, then it would be approximately a $3.5-million situation, with resulting in, we'll have that decreases in the amount of money that would go to Cape Light Compact for the low-income rates. So this is just, again, we can toggle back and forth between.
That sounds good. Let's open it back up for another round of questions. Selectman Smith?
Ed, there's a 3% escalator in the, in the lease that, that the, let's see, is paying us?
That's correct.
Okay. And that goes for the full 20 years?
Yes, it does.
The, the, the only reason why the question is, I, I know that the, the panels, after, after about 15 years, their, their generation is, starts to fall off slightly.
Slightly, yes. I got solar in my house recently, and the panels, the panels are, are superior than the older panels that were available. The loss is quite a lot less, and the warranties are for 25 years.
Versus the 20, which is what they used to be recently.
Correct, yeah. The efficiencies and the watts per panel have increased dramatically.
Right. And their, their efficiency's gone from roughly 12% to 17 to 18%.
Great.
If it's rainy and cloudy, at my house, we still get a significant amount of solar energy.
That's good to know. Selectman Post?
So this is guaranteed? The, the, the way that the contract will be written will be, this is a guarantee, this isn't fluctuating. The only question I have is, is at the end of its life, what is the, what is the town's agreement in terms of reclamation of the, the property or?
So in 20, in 20 years, we would discuss this with Ameresco, look at the efficiency and look at the production, look at what the town would like to do. They're responsible for removing, whenever the lease is up, for removing the solar panels and removing the hardware in brackets that support the panels. Then what we, we can choose what to do with it at that point in time. Do another RFP, you know, another entity was interested in that particular location. You know, there could be other entities that are interested in the location. Depends on what we do with the septic facility. So that could be an even larger location. So, you know, at that point in time, we would decide what to do. And we could possibly have a fund to put, set aside money if we wanted to make it into a, a park or something like that.
So in terms of the timing of this and the septic facility, the septic facility is, is permitted for how many more years?
We.
I know we just redid it, right?
I, I, I think it's either three to five years at a time. Our debt service runs out on the bond that we took out to keep it alive with, I think it's 2026. And then we need to make a decision about what we do with the wastewater treatment plant, whether that's going to take septic or not. And if we did consolidate it, we're trying to chase some O and M savings. You know, then you would, if it's a consolidated plant, we're looking at $2 million a year in O and M savings, but there are issues with larger trucks going down Buck Island Road. So, you know, that's another set of hard decisions for you guys to make.
I appreciate that. Selectman Smith, did you have another question?
Yes, if I remember correctly, when, when the folks were here before, on the takedown at the end of the 20 years, they do have a reserve fund? If I remember correctly?
They have a bond.
They have a bond. Who, who follows the bond to make sure it doesn't go away?
Town, town treasures, you know, follow all bonds.
Okay. And one other question? What's O and M?
Operations and maintenance, I'm sorry. We, we weren't saving a lot with DHY in terms of capital, but there were some O and M savings, and so we want to look at options for mitigating the, you know, producing those same O and M savings.
Okay. Any other board members?
Just one quick question. Is there any need to do any fencing or anything to make sure that there's no?
They do fencing, yes.
Yeah, that's, I think that's almost an automatic.
Right.
Because of liability.
Yep, thank you.
And valuable equipment.
Yes.
Both.
Right, it's considered a.
Attractive nuisance.
Attractive nuisance, that's the term I was looking for.
There you go. Okay, please continue it.
Okay, so this is the schedule, or proposed schedule, looking back in time. The RFP in 2020, again, this is the second one. We had one in 2018 as well. They were awarded this RFP in November of '30. And a lot of departments participated in this and kind of reviewed the award. Had preliminary meetings, they had preliminary meetings with the permitting departments to get a sense of what was required for permitting. They did 20% of the design, went through, you know, different types of iterations, negotiated the lease. And what they're looking to do is hopefully get the ability for the town administrator to sign a lease dependent, based on whatever options you choose in terms of how much area they would use for the solar panels. And then they would go through all of the permitting that you all talked about, meet with the different boards and committees, have the public hearings that are appropriate for this particular project.
Okay.
And, and they would go through the interconnection service agreement with Eversource, do the 100% designs, get the building permits, et cetera, et cetera, if you want to go into more detail or not.
No, I just think the interconnection service agreement, how long do you think that's going to take? Are we still going to be alive?
Really? You know, I, I think there's been some breakthroughs, and, you know, I think it's good that we, that we went before Eversource, maybe as part of their asking for you to sign a letter. Maybe we talked to them about our local interconnection agreements, because we have several projects.
Okay.
The team from Ameresco.
How you doing?
Let's guys come up. We are way ahead of schedule.
I'll sit right here, and Jackson can sit right here. I am John Mancini from Ameresco, Senior Vice President. Jackson Ameresco, apologies for the late.
It's okay.
And we'll come back to some questions that, that you all had.
Yeah, no, we're doing quite well. We're moving along here, so.
I just want to understand this timeline. This timeline is just for the solar panels? Or is this for the, for the entire project with the?
This is the entire solar project.
So not for the anaerobic digestion, so this, so 2024?
2023?
Well, I mean, I'm looking.
Oh, yes, yeah, 2024, yeah.
Jeez.
And that's an optimistic schedule, I think.
They were asking about the interconnection with Eversource.
So we, we think that the interconnection timeline in particular is consistent with their published dates. We've been doing it for a while. You know, on occasion, you know, they, they can run over their timelines due to a number of issues. But it's, it's the, it's the dates that we're working with based off their published dates.
Thank you. Keep going.
Just wanted to come back to, again, why, why are we here? We're trying to generate revenue for our wastewater project and help to fund the wastewater project.
We got it, Ed.
Okay.
All right, let me, with that, yeah, I, I think we've been doing different rounds of questions all throughout the presentation. So we've gone through the site, the site plan. We reviewed that, we've talked about some of the impacts. We know that there'll be some additional reviews. I think we made it very clear that where there may be an impact or an issue, and it's, we're going to be very open to finding ways to negotiate and figure out ways to mitigate.
Sure.
Visual impacts, because there's one corridor there to the east where we think that, that some additional work could be explored.
Okay.
But beyond that, I, I think what we saw in the presentation was very minimal impact in any other venue, but by that border next to the healthcare clinic.
Yes.
Yes, and I think that's an area where it's worth exploring some additional mitigation. I don't know if you need to go the full distance.
Fluck that lower level.
Trees, as well as, one option we could look at is along the fence, we could do a, a green mesh attachment, which can act as a visual buffer there as well to treat plantings.
Yeah, and, and these are, these are items that I think will probably come up during the review process for the project as well, by the department heads and the community. I, I just think, I, I think we were making it clear as a board that we're very receptive to making overtures on that kind of mitigation.
Based on recommendation, your recommendations, we'll just do it.
Okay. Anybody?
Well, I was just going to ask, basically in terms of the process, what our, what our role is? Do we make a recommendation? What are you looking for from us?
I'll just get to the end here.
I think we want to.
What we'd like to do is, if you feel, if you are strong, feel strongly about one of the options, then you can make a motion to actually have the town administrator sign the lease agreement after negotiating certain items like the, you know, reducing the visual impact in that particular location, as well as negotiating the, the terms and, and the dollar amounts. No lower, but maybe we can talk about ways to get them higher.
And sorry, we started early. Apologize, we missed all that.
No, no.
This is a new, this is a new trend, by the way.
I was going to say, it's a first, first town meeting I've been to where it's been early, so.
Yeah, yeah. We decided we go ahead of schedule, yeah. All right, so this is the.
Or are we looking for more feedback or?
Let's, let's, before you offer the motion, let me just see if other board members have any more questions now that Ameresco's here. Selectman Smith?
No further questions.
Okay. Selectman Horgan?
No questions.
Final round of questions. How about Selectman Stone? No, okay, let's hear your motion, Selectman.
My motion would be that we authorize the town administrator to revise the lease agreement, or actually to enter into a lease agreement based on the original proposal put before us, and to sign a lease agreement for a solar project with proceeds used for wastewater pre-funding and funding. And as part of that motion, I think we, we would like to make it clear that the visual, to the extent possible, as part of our agreement, we do the best we can to mitigate any visual impacts to the businesses that are affected. I don't know if we want to do just that one specific.
I think, I think that's fine. I think that gets the point across. We're going into this assuming that that's the only area where there's the visual impact. We've seen all the other scenarios, we've seen the other analysis. It would appear, and then we've been given every assurance that that's the only place where there's going to be a visual impact. So I think Selectman Post is just giving the direction to the administrator that further work be done on that. But I think overall, you, you presented all the information that we were looking for. This is a wonderful presentation, it was very well done. The kind of questions we had, we got answers. So I think that's the motion that's on the table. Is there a second?
And, and this is, this is for the, the larger, the largest dollar amount, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Ms. Post, for the largest dollar?
Yeah, the 5.7 megawatt solar.
Okay, second.
Okay. Any discussion at all, board members? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Not bad, huh? You came here for five minutes and bingo, look at that.
Nice work on that presentation. I think working with the board and improving it, it was very comprehensive.
Thank you. Okay. Our friends from Eversource, welcome.
And here they are, all right?
And they're here, yeah.
Should we start by telling you how much we need an interconnection agreement? Different department, I know, I know.
Well, the last time you were here, we had a very pleasant discussion about a very exciting project, and we're looking for.
Blizzard.
Is that what we had that night?
Three days later.
Oh, three days later, I see, yeah, well, welcome back, and.
Having us.
Yeah, no, we're anxious to learn more, see how things are going.
Chairman Forrest, members of the board, Bob and, and Bill. Ronique Goldstein with Eversource Energy Community Relations. You already know Andy Belden. We've added someone to the team, Amy Dyke Redman.
Tracy.
Tracy, I keep calling you Amy.
She's on, no.
This happened in the parking lot, too. I said, where's Amy? Tracy is a member of Andy's team, and we heard what you requested the last time we were here before you in January, right before the storm. We would like to follow up with some enhanced visuals at your request, and also in your packet is a letter from your building commissioner, Mark Grills. We have the path or the roadmap for permitting. And so with that, I'll, I'll pass it to Andy, kind of to march through the presentation and see if you have any questions or input for the team.
Great, thanks, Ronique. So as Ronique mentioned, I'm Andy Belden, Vice President of Solar Programs at Eversource. A few brief slides in response to the questions that you had. I think the, the two questions that you had were what our permitting process would be and how we would interact with the town as we move forward with this project. And then further, you wanted to see a visual representation of, of a, a side view of the project, which we didn't bring last time. So just as a reminder, we're proposing a 2.1-megawatt solar canopy at our 484 Willow Street Area Work Center. This will be a hybrid solar and battery project. It should be designed to provide backup power in the event of a power outage at that critical facility. The project would be authorized under the recent Climate Act. So this was passed back in March. That Climate Act allows Eversource and the other electric distribution companies in the state of Massachusetts to own additional, additional solar when paired with energy storage for the benefit of providing resilience to critical facilities. So just briefly, some of the benefits for the project, and I think we're actually, oh, I have control. My apologies. Some of the benefits of the, the project, obviously, we're going to be producing clean renewable power, reducing fossil fuel emissions. particularly reducing fossil fuel emissions when the power goes out. We currently have a diesel generator on site. So we'd be offsetting that 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 those those direct emissions in the community. This would obviously support the emergency operations that we conduct at that facility and also provide resilience to our broader electric grid. There'll also be some job creation benefits, so we're going to be asking any of the partners that we work with to design and build the system to to commit to to training for for local residents as part of the procurement process. We're also going to be structuring or proposing to be structuring this project as a community shared solar project. So that means any of the energy revenues from the project would be used to offset bills for for members of the community. And we'd work with you and other members of the community on identifying who those those customers should be once we get a little further down in the process. And then also, as part of the legislation, we're required to reduce peak demand. As you know, these projects are are built at no cost to the municipality. So just briefly, where we are. So we came and spoke to you on January 25th. Also met with the the Energy Committee on February 1st at a a good in-depth conversation about that this project as well as about the legislation more broadly and potential further opportunities to work with the town to develop solar projects. Then, you know, our team came down and spoke with the building commissioner on February 15th. And then we're back here with you today. Really, what we're hoping to accomplish today is both to answer your questions, but then also move forward with a letter of support because from our perspective, we are very early in the the development of this project. One of the things that's critical for us to go forward and invest more money in the project is to get a letter of support from you and then also approval for the project from the Department of Public Utilities. So every project that we we develop needs to be specifically agreed to by the department. And then from there, we we hire a contracting firm to do more design work and actually build out and construct the project. So really, today, you know, what we're hoping to do, as I said, is answer your questions and then also seek your support for us being able to take this project to the department for their their review. So once we get through that Department of Public Utilities process, then we begin the permitting process with the town, which I think was the the key question that you had last time. We wanted to better understand what the permitting process would be. And that was the 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 topic of discussion for our February 15th meeting with the building commissioner. And so as we understand it, and as I think documented in a letter from the building commissioner in your packet, the process would be we would come up with a design. It would include all the visuals, more in-depth architectural designs that will would flow out of our process of procuring from a consultant to the design review committee. We'd take their feedback, incorporate it into design and then put in an application to the site for site plan review. From there, if there was any zoning variances needed, we would then take that to the zoning board of appeals. And then finally, the the final step would be to submit a an electric permit and a building permit for approval by the the building commissioner. So any any questions about that that permitting process?
Do you have an estimation of the time that process is gonna take?
So we don't have a a great estimate of what the the time period will be for the the DPU review. It could be six months, it could be nine months, it could be a year. We're expecting a transition at some point in the administration. So right now, there's a bit of a wild card in terms of when we would even be able to to put in a permit. I don't know, Renee, did you have any?
So Mark gave us, I didn't look at, I should have looked, my notes might be in in this notebook, but I, it didn't, it wasn't a lengthy time, you know, he felt. So we had, we had applied, the projects changed a little bit since 2017, but he had notes and information from the previous time. I mean, I want to say that the permitting process, if I had to guess, would be, you know, eight to 10 weeks. I'm just, I'm just guessing, but and it probably also depends on the volume of what he has before him.
Okay.
But he's, he was pretty clear and and knew the steps that would need to be taken. And again, it all hinges if there are some zoning and then it's just getting in front of the board, the ZBA for a hearing.
And critically, you know, what we're asking for approval for today is really just to go to the DPU. It doesn't commit the town to anything in particular. Great. So providing some visual representations. So this is the the current site. It's a parking lot with a chain link fence and a and a barbed wire at the the top. So we feel like we can do better, for sure. And then the the solar, the parking lot actually is down a bit of a hill. So the the representation, we would have kind of in-depth conversations with the site plan review about particular plantings. One of the the key and unique concerns with this site is we don't want trees that are going to be so tall that they run into problems with the airport, which is across the street. So we'll have specific requirements around that. So there's going to be a kind of a right sizing of of any trees that that might, you know, block the view for the for the site. So this is really just a first cut. As we go forth with a a site plan review, we would have actual architectural drawings that would be, you know, more specific plantings of of that nature. And so really, here to just take any questions that you might have from our perspective. We hope to get your support for for the project for our next step. And we would take it to the the DPU and and start the process with with our regulator to get the project approved.
That's great. Thanks, Andy. Any board members would like to have any questions? Selectman Smith?
I'm I'm assuming the blue was where the where the panels would go.
That is correct, yes.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, good. Selectman Post?
We we hit, we hit on a lot of the questions last time, so.
I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm not cutting anybody short. Selectman Post?
Visually, in this rendering with the plantings out front, that only show indicates one of the areas based on that aerial. So there's multiple spots along there?
Yeah.
So would that shrubbery go along?
Yeah, we would look to put the 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 same types of shrubbery all along, so you would have a consistent visual along along the entire way.
Okay, that's all I'm.
We work with our arborists who are experts that we're dealing with with replanting at a substation in Orleans. And they're the experts of whether it's native species or what will what will work best on the Cape in the area.
I'm sure there'll be, if you have to go to the ZBA, there'll be comments on on that particular portion, but in terms of in terms of, you know, my support, I think I think you've done a great job. So I'm supportive of this project. Thank you.
Selectman Stone?
I have no questions. I'm in support of it as well.
Selectman Horgan?
No questions.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Before you do that, let me see what.
One one last question. You you mentioned, you mentioned the airport, which was gonna be one of my questions. Do you have to go to the F A, I mean, the the FAA, get the right acronym here?
We did have a conversation in the airport, both when we were first looking at this project, project in 2017 and recently, I think it was in in December. They didn't express any specific concerns. So we think we're we're good on on that front and won't need any any specific FDA variances for the project.
Right. One of the reasons why I asked is on the on the other side of the airport, they said, oh, these trees are too tall, and they took down a bunch of trees which are lower than the power lines, which made no sense to me, but I'm not that smart.
Okay.
No further questions?
There you go. I think selectman Post has a motion.
To make a motion that we we endorse the letter of support that's been provided to us to Chairman Nelson in our packet and authorize the board chairman to sign this on our behalf. Should we read the letter for the public's knowledge or?
I don't know if that's necessary to read that into the record. It's just a general letter of support with the description of the project. And I think that should be sufficient. Okay, is there a second?
No, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Before we vote, I have just one question, and I just want to say it's been a very eye-opening review process to come back with the renderings and and to see in this area that is hasn't really lent itself to any significant site planning throughout that corridor. I I would like to amend the letter to acknowledge the the planting program as one of the benefits of this particular project that with or without the solar canopy, I I think what this does is is it provides a much more higher quality view shed in that area that looks less intense and industrial. And, you know, it doesn't, it's not meant to to hide everything, but I I just think it increases the the quality of the area, especially to the extent that they have the professional arborists involved.
Do you mind if we say something nice in our in this letter about your view? Okay. Is that okay with those making the motion in the second?
I would amend my motion to take Mr. Wirtanau's comments into effect. I think that that was.
And the comment on the aesthetic improvements.
Yes, sounds very good. Okay, well, do I have, okay, we've got any more discussion? No, hearing none. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can we get back to talk about those interconnections, though? Before you leave?
Big thing, you know?
Yeah, send them, send them our way, will you?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I know there's work that's being done on Willow Street. And obviously, at the other end, there's work that's being done, the demolition of.
Did that yesterday, right? They've done all that building?
Yeah.
This week?
There, yeah, the.
I was thinking about that because at some point in time, they're probably going to widen this road, but it looks like there's enough space there.
It does.
At least on that side.
Right.
Because I I think that that's probably a plan for the future.
I would agree. So we may, we may see some revisions at some point in the future. Okay, the item regarding the water department, we're still awaiting them. Okay. Okay, well, we can move on. We can go back to the regular business board and committee actions and go over the upcoming agenda review and continue on. There's an objection.
I don't think we have any more board than the committee, do we?
Consent agenda?
Well, we, but the consent agenda is later in the town administrators' items. So I'm going to stick with board and committee actions. And first, we'll go to on the upcoming agenda review. Bob, do you want to walk through us? We've got a on the 19th, our next meeting?
I'd be happy to.
It'll be a town meeting prep, additional prep work that we might need to do.
Yeah.
And an update on Route 6A.
We we have the the Route 6A follow-up tentatively scheduled. And we we've done a lot of, you know, we have a lot of video out there that's on the government channel. Right now, the last two selectmen's meetings, the lion's share was spent going through the the warrant, and we have some additional video content. So I wasn't sure, you know, more content on the town meeting review, you know, really, you know, we needed to go through it a third or fourth time, but.
I do think it would be helpful. I've seen, I I've actually stumbled on it when I was going to the Yarmouth YouTube channel. I saw, all of a sudden, saw the new content. So I would recommend board members going to the Town of Yarmouth YouTube channel where some of this content can be found. I don't know if there are any other links that you might want to send the board, but we certainly should post them, get them out there, keep pushing them.
Yeah, we've got them on on Facebook and on YouTube and on the government channel, and we're trying to make another video as well that just explains the article. So it's it's kind of a flood situation, but every everyone's been working on it, and I I really appreciate their efforts and.
I think it's great.
And, you know, we did have a a a meeting with our our team to follow up on 6A, and we're having another meeting on that tomorrow. If, you know, we're we're going to be prepared, whether it's on the 19th or
Okay.
or the 3rd, that, you know, we'll be ready to talk about, you know, we've split it up into some immediate types of actions that can be taken, some longer term actions, but, you know, the key step would be, you know, meeting with the business community on that tomorrow.
So is it, is it legitimate to pose a question as to whether or not the board wants to have a meeting on the April 19th?
Can I just say, though, I think that if we can deal with this, the sooner the better. These businesses are getting ready to go into their season. And if there's signage or anything required, that's going to take some time. So I think a decision, the sooner we can do that for them, I think.
So you're recommending that we continue with that date?
If it's ready, if it's ready, I mean, I think time is of the essence, that's all.
Anybody else?
I agree with that. If if it's not ready, then I definitely think we may not need the meeting, but otherwise, I'm I'm fine.
Fine going ahead and meeting, even though that could be another brief one, God forbid.
Well, can we take something off of May 3rd and put it over there? I mean, that looks like a lot.
Can I comment on May 3rd? Because I think it pertains to what Tracy's talking about.
Okay, go right ahead.
There's a lot of licensing hearings.
Yes.
But but one of them obviously continued over from tonight because of the gentleman's family situation. But Blue Water, Riviera and Red Jacket, my understanding is are gonna are gonna be by the same business entity that's going to be applying for all three licenses. So I think anything that's said in the first hearing, we can just incorporate into the next two hearings, see if there's any public comments. And also, my understanding is from talking to Dakota, is that the managers that are going to be in place for these three businesses are the same managers that Davenport had. So I don't think the hearings are going to take very much time at all.
Okay, so it looks.
I do think the hearing that we continue tonight is is not in the same category.
So are you suggesting that we stick with this agenda? You think it'll be fine?
Yeah, I I again, I think it looks a lot more ominous than it is. I think those three hearings probably, my guess, would be take maybe 15, 20 minutes for all three of them.
Okay. Very good. And as just as a reminder, there is on the, just a note that we're meeting at 5:30 on the 26th. Is that? So there is a board meeting on the 26th. It's just not noted here. We'll meet briefly at 5:30 before the town meeting.
Executive session or just, we're just going early?
Pre-meeting.
Just a pre-meeting.
We have.
Oh, you mean before the town meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is that going to be 5:30?
Yeah. And let let me just put it out because at the last pre-meeting that we did before the town meeting.
Right.
We actually went through the, didn't we go through the binder? And review in some detail there. So we did.
You're page shuffling.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there was page shuffling and prep. The the value of, and we started that meeting at 5.
Right.
And we used most of that time to make sure that we had questions answered, we were up on each of the articles. There was a value to it. Now, if we start at 5:30, we're going to be cutting that off a bit. Now, maybe the board's comfortable with that. I just wanted to point out that I found that discussion with the town administrator and the team to be very valuable and very helpful time. But we may have been through the warrant so many times, there may not be a need. So I'm just going to put this up. I mean, if there's a recommendation to start this earlier, I'm very open to that. Instead of meeting at 5:30, meeting at 5, just so that we can go through the binder, all the articles, make sure everybody knows specifically. Is that?
I'm fine with 5, I don't.
Are you fine with 5?
Yeah, I, yeah.
We haven't been over this with town council either.
We, we always find that it takes a little longer than we expected. So I think 5 is is the safe bet.
Okay.
And there's still an article we have to take a position on.
Correct. Yeah, and I find it helpful to have, if we can definitely have town council with us. Again, just to be on the safe side. So if there's any question on an article, legality, the wording or whatever, we just, we're just covered. And and we could get through that. So that'll be the time that we spend going through the binder and dealing with any last minute recommendations. Okay?
It'll be great. And remember, last town meeting, we were also doing the brush. And that took a a lot of time, too. We we had the cleanup after the fall town meeting that was, you know, there was the big storm that that we had, I think it was October something. And so that was that whole program we went through, and that took us a little bit off of. But this will be great. We'll meet at 5. We'll be able to, you know, there's more articles. We'll be able to just warrant. And yeah, the other thing good is is that what I hope to see is not a lot of page shuffling, is that, you know, we've shuffled a lot of pages and I and I think everything is is going to be solid. So.
You heard that here tonight, folks. No page shuffling.
Yeah, and and once you get your books, then you go through them. Hopefully, that's going to be the game plan.
Okay, that's good. All right, so. All right, so are we good in looking at, looking ahead? I think we're in pretty good shape at this point. Okay, let's move on from that to individual items. Are there any individual items board members would like to bring up at this time? Selectman Horgan, do you have a?
Oh, thank you.
Selectman Stone?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, I'd like to comment on a matter that you had brought up earlier about the ceremony today at the new police training facility. When the governor did a ceremonial signing of Nero's Law, it, it was a bittersweet thing. I mean, that, that tragedy will always be felt by this community. At, at the time, there's, there's a celebration of the positive things that have come out of that tragedy. I mean, there's no, there's no way you can separate out, you know, the two aspects of it, but I, I thought it was very accommodating and very nice of the governor to come down and, and really provide, I think, in a sense, a healing moment for the family and, and for the community of Yarmouth and beyond. And, and I'm not making a political statement here, but he's, he's a very responsive individual, and when we had the tornado, he was down here marshaling the assets of the, of the Commonwealth and, and very, very helpful, very responsive, and I, I would like to, to see us write him a letter of thanks for remembering Sean and his family in, in, in this way in connection with the K-9 legislation that he signed today.
Thank you. I'll, I'll second that. Okay, Tracy?
No, I, I completely agree. He has been a great partner for this town all along, both the governor and the lieutenant governor. They were here for the community, for anything that they needed in the, in the aftermath of, of that, and I just, you know, listening to him talk today, it's, it's clear he speaks from his heart, and there were a lot of moments there, you know, where he took the card that he'd been carrying for four years out of his pocket. And for the public that, that also didn't hear him speak today, they have a, I forgot what they called it, a weekly leadership meeting.
Right.
And this bill was very important to him, and every single week in his leadership meeting, this was on his list of things to accomplish. So I think that, that's a great idea, Mike, that we should send our letter of thanks.
And I'd also like to, Tracy just reminded me, my comments are also meant for the lieutenant governor, Karen Polito. I inadvertently left her out. She's been very supportive of this community as well.
Very good. Tracy, any individual items? Selectmen Smith?
No individual items for me either.
No, I'd, I'd like to, obviously, I, I, you know, we were being there and hearing the governor speak. You could see clearly that he was, he was affected by this. He was just as much impacted by this as everybody in Yarmouth was impacted by, and beyond. And his dedication, his, his commitment to continue to advocate for this proposal, you know, certainly needs to be commended. He, I, I mean, I, I-- I think his presence here is also part of the healing process as well. Him, is, him being here, him speaking to us, and the ceremony, the way it was constructed, the way it was put together, I thought it was just a wonderful moment in a very difficult situation. So I think, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that letter and letting him know. I, I did speak to him after the signing, and I told him just how much his presence here, how important it was and how much we all appreciated it. I wanted to make sure that he heard that from me on behalf of the board and the community, but a, a letter like this certainly makes a great deal of sense, so I look forward to working on that. Town administrator items, consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'll start with the consent agenda, which I have two items. The first is a pledge of stock interest from Ryan Family Amusement as a licensing matter. The second is the acceptance of a donation to the Yarmouth Police Department by David McAdherne, a amount of $25. Selectman Stone and I know that we'll have another donation coming on your next agenda as we met a very generous individual as we left the event just today on his way to the police department with another donation.
Okay, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Town administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would just echo the board's sentiments. What a powerful presentation that, that was today, just to be there to bear witness to that. It was a very moving event, and it's just wonderful to, to have everyone there, like we did, the whole, the whole Yarmouth family, it seems, was, was there. We talked a little bit about, you know, we, we've had some efforts that are expanded to promote the town meeting. I, I do wanna thank Jeff Colby and Bill Scott, and I dragged them into our TV show that we did, and thank Kate McMahon from Cape Media that, and this, you know, started with my fact-finding, going over there and finding out what resources were available for the town to leverage, and, you know, they really do have a beautiful studio. And unfortunately, the overall contract that we have with Cape Media is where, you know, the PEG access is for public access, educational access, and government access to our cable TV, and unfortunately, over the years, we've split those up. And the Cape Media contract only covers the public part, and the educational is only covered through the DY school system. And the government part, you know, until now, we've never really grabbed it and, and made it something special, and, and so that is what we're gonna be working on in this coming year as we start July 1. Those funds, all of our cable funds, are gonna be sequestered into an account that's gonna be reserved for PEG, and we'll be able to evaluate what we can do to really stimulate the, the government channel and, and to, and in this, this day and age, and that's our big problem, is getting the word out to local residents on what's going on, what we're doing. And so to have Cape Media step up, and, you know, they've indicated that they'll help us, whether it's on location, in their fine studios, and, and that was just our first installment, was the town meeting show, and it was great to get the, the diff out there, get some of the DPW stuff and all of the general discussions. So watch that and--
Can I ask a question about that? Because I know we had, I think the school system gets a portion of that, so to anything that we make changes, I think that could impact them, we should make sure we have a conversation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we did, you know, we've had a problem in the, in the past year in just coordinating all of that, and just, so everyone knows that one of the things that, you know, we've done, we've made the school whole by transferring all, you know, the funds over from, from their share, but of course, we had to do this from budget transfers because all of the cable money goes into the, you know, local estimated receipts, but absolutely. I mean, you have my guarantee, we've been working with the school. What, what I had hoped to do is further leverage the educational department to see potentially, you know, we could even give them more money. For example, we talked about not having an adequate mechanism to do governmental programming to, you know, let people know what's, what's happening. You know, it may very well be that through the school department, we can create the capital facilities. I mean, one of the things that we don't wanna do is have different studios in different areas, but if, you know, there, there's really not a lot of space here for a studio, but if we had one in our town that was the government studio, we could go over there, you know, once a week and say, we could do little videos of what's going on with selectmen's meetings or things of that nature. So I, I will guarantee you that we'll keep the educational program--
Right.
--in the mix of things, and what we're looking for are there ways that we can leverage educational and government, but it's clearly a three-legged stool with public, education, and government, and, and I honestly, I think we can do tons better on, on just getting some programming up, and I thought it was great to even have a, a little fake kitchen over there at Cape Media, so somebody is a--
Cooking show.
Oh, wow.
Can do a cooking show.
Cooking.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. That sounds good.
Thanks for, for mentioning that, and I, I wanted to let board members know, too, there's a press release that's gonna be coming out. I'm probably getting in trouble for mentioning this a little early, but I was very encouraged to see a project that you've been working on, that we recently finalized the Bridgewater State University lease, and one of the great benefits of that program is, you know, we've brought the Cape Cod Collaborative on, which is truly, it's a governmental collaborative of all of the school districts on Cape Cod to offer special education services, and they're gonna be sort of a sublety of Bridgewater State University. And as you know, we had allowed them to seek funding for some non-structural repairs. Number one, we're gonna have the MacArthur School much more fully, fully utilized, and, and number two, there's gonna be some nice investment in that property that is gonna keep it in great shape, and we've recently received word that Mass Development has sold bonds in the amount of $3 million to fund those non-structural renovations, to prepare the spaces to service classrooms and to have some recreational areas, restrooms, and all manner of things that are just bringing it, bringing it up. And so I, I think very limited or little or no risk to the town. It's a lot of investment going in on that property, but for me, more importantly, it's gonna signify, I think, a much more productive use of the facility, and, and it's great, and I think hopefully that that'll keep Bridgewater State there for a good long time, and the, the programs that they operate at, at the Cape Collaborative, those are great programs. And I, I know our school system utilizes them tremendously to save on the, the special education costs that without this program, you know, we would have to send the children to, you know, these various programs that are throughout southeastern Massachusetts at a tremendous cost. So that's something that we're gonna be hearing a lot more about, Mass Development's bonds, and they were purchased by TD Bank, and so I, I think that process is gonna be moving forward.
If I could just suggest something, maybe at a future meeting, is maybe just an update on what those improvements are. Are they gonna mention that in the press release, exactly what they're doing? I know they wanted to upgrade the sprinkler system.
What they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be constructing petitions and walls. The interior space needs to be, you know, divided up into classrooms, and the big problem, and one of the big costs up there, the electric is like shock--
I see.
--in many areas of the building. So they're improving and replacing the electrical systems, they're installing lighting, so this could be all new lighting and electrical. The bathrooms are, and all of the plumbing is gonna be mostly replaced and upgraded, so they're gonna have adequate bathroom facilities. Again, they're gonna be building several classrooms out that don't exist now. Handicap access is gonna be provided to the facility, and the, the whole parking lot is gonna be redone, and, and that's gonna help as well. And so the total, they're all non-structural items, but it's more than just, you know, the way it looks, some of the, the functioning, like the building systems, like electrical and, and the plumbing, you know, it's quite expensive, so it's about $3 million total, and, and those are gonna be moving forward over the next couple of months. And I wanna thank the building commissioner, too. He's been just a rock star on this project that, watching them, you know, very closely, there is some abatement work that they're doing on some hazardous materials, primarily asbestos that's in the building, which is typical of school facilities of that age. So that's another expensive part of it, but they're gonna be doing all of the asbestos abatement, too, and, and that work's already begun. That's like the first part.
That's great.
So, but I will be able to provide you with regular updates. I would just, was emailing the director yesterday on, you know, some of the things that we're working on, a follow-up to the board's discussions with the Yarmouth Substance Abuse Committee. The chairman and I had just met with them, and, and they're looking for some additional facilities for some expanded programming that they'd like to do for adolescents that are at risk of substance abuse, and I, I think working, you know, this is a town committee, and so they're working directly together with, you know, the Board of Health and the town staff and the Board of Selectmen to try to expand these programs and, and work, try to stimulate that to the greatest extent possible, especially with this opioid money that we've worked very hard to make sure we're a strong part of. Those funds are gonna start to, to come through, and, and one of the things that, that we've done is, while they're going through these renovations, we've, in a very hopeful way, connected the Cape Cod Collaborative folks with the Yarmouth Substance Abuse Commission with the hope that if they're building out some of these classrooms and areas, potentially there could be some programming space that could be used as a peer center that we're trying to set up for these at-risk adolescent youth in Yarmouth and Bonstable area to have a place where some of the structured programming around that can take place, and it's very difficult to find locations. You know, they, they wanna be out of the school system because, you know, it's kinda independent from the, the schools. The, I hate to say it, our town buildings are, you know, kinda lame for attracting the adolescents, you know, to, to have a place where they're comfortable going in the evening and, and, and meeting. And, you know, the problem, too, is a lot of our facilities, you can come in and use it for a couple of hours, but you have to leave it spotless, like you found it. And so what we're looking for is some more comfortable spaces where the kids can go and, and hang out and be with their counselors and, and do the structured programming that, that we need. So it's just another example of having a facility like that, that is having some improvements, is being actively managed, we're trying to get the space usable. It has other potential spill-off benefits for the community. I mean, and, and having the university and the special education there is, is great, but, but there's other things as well, and just, finally, I'm taking longer than anyone tonight, but--
We noticed.
I, I just wanna mention the last thing, is that we've had a couple of exciting, I, I mentioned the RFP that we're doing for the drive-in site, and we've honed that down from last year. I think the process has been a little more improved, and we've got some very interesting, not a ton of events, but the carnival wants to come back, and a new expanded pirate festival, which is multifarious, that there's a big meeting among the staff just to review the different elements of that in advance of hopefully--
Okay.
--sharing some recommendations to the board. So I wanted to let you know that that's kinda moving forward quickly to a lot of other seasonal-type items that will be continuing to, to keep you guys apprised of.
What I'd like to do is, under your agenda, is make sure that in preparing your binder--
Yeah, we don't wanna forget that.
--you know exactly which select board member is gonna handle which item.
Have we done that?
We haven't done that, no. That's, 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 that's an item for the, under the town manager's report. So we're gonna take a moment now.
Ready.
Okay, good, good. So--
Thirty divided by five.
Okay, is what?
Six.
There we go. So we each grab six articles.
Mark gets one through six.
So I get one through six, okay. That's the, that's the tradition, the chair gets the first six.
I'll do 14 through 19.
That's Mark.
No, 13 through 18.
Six, 13.
Through 18. That's Mike Stone.
18. That's Mike.
So does, we have a candidate for seven to 12?
Yeah, I'm fine doing that.
Okay, seven to 12, Selectman Horgan.
I'll do 19 through, one, two, three, four, five, six, 24.
Tracy's--
Okay.
And then Peter.
Looks like you're pulling up the rear, Selectman Smith. How's that sound?
I'm used to it.
Okay, there we go. Boy, that didn't take long.
Six.
Okay, so we've got our warrant article list, we're all set, and when the binders are prepared, we'll all be well organized.
You wanna trade? Do you want the town seal?
Wanna trade?
I'll do the town seal.
I'll do the town seal.
I'll trade with you, I don't care.
There you go, okay. There you go, we can do trading now. We're going to, did you get that Bob? There's a trade, what, you're trading the seal to the what? You'll do the last one?
He's going to do 19 through 24.
I'll give you 36 and 37 for 29.
Yeah, no, 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 for number four and next year's warrant, right? Yeah, it's like, it's like the NFL draft, right?
Right.
Yeah. Can we trade future warrant obligations?
Futures.
That's a good one.
I'm trading them all.
Okay.
Which, which one, you, you gave up 22 and did you pick up one of the?
No, I've, I've took, he, Peter's taken 19 through 24, I'm taking 25 through 30.
Oh, so you're trading the entire mix?
Block.
Okay.
Bingo.
He's got which one, so he just flipped huge.
Yeah. I'm all about that.
All right.
No problem.
Peter.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, that's no problem, I got it.
All right, that's great. So the next item on our agenda is water department update. And I think our presenters are here tonight. Okay, that's great. Well, we can start with the DPW director.
Okay.
That was probably smart.
Okay, be ready. Fire it up, fire up the, the overhead projector. Well, in the interest of moving things along. Which, are we starting with the PFOS update, water department?
Yeah, so what we'll do is start with the PFOS update and then transition into a water conservation. It'll become clearer after we talk about the PFOS, why the water conservation is so important, especially heading into the summer season. For those at home, I'm Jeff Colby, the Public Works Director. The slides are warming up here.
But the folks at home can see the slides and we can just watch the monitor until things heat up here. Okay?
Okay, excellent.
We just have to instruct the, you got. And we can see that the, the question is getting at the switch. Okay, here we go. There you go, now you're also.
Great. And Lori Rosala, the Water and Wastewater Superintendent will be here shortly. I'll go through the presentation and all the difficult questions, she can field those when, when she gets here. So what's PFOS and where did it come from? There's been a lot of discussion within the community, within the state, within the country about what they're calling the forever chemical. It is found in, in quite a few of the Cape Cod drinking water wells, not just here in Yarmouth, but throughout a couple of towns on Cape Cod. Barnstable had a real challenge with that, which is over the last couple of years, the primary reason why we were selling water to them for some of the contaminants that they had within their water, weren't able to supply enough to provide for the demand within the Hyannis Water Service Area. We're going to talk about PFOS here in, in Yarmouth in the three wells that we have taken offline because of the exceedances of PFOS here in Yarmouth. And then we will talk about some of the alternatives. So what's PFOS? It's per polyfluoride substance. It's a family of chemicals, it's been used since the 1950s. Some people generally attribute it to firefighting chemicals and foams, and that's certainly one source, but we're seeing it being much more prevalent than that. You see it in stain resistant and water resistant, non-stick coatings, Teflon, those types of things. So it's in personal care products, it, it really is everywhere, in jackets. Again, it's a water resistance. Hello, just started. And so studies have indicated that the exposure to significantly elevated levels of PFOS is a cause for a variety of, of health concerns. The real debate recently was what are the right levels to regulate? It's not currently regulated at the federal level, but Massachusetts, along with a few other states, has recently regulated it. And that is something that, that third bullet down, you can see that there's six of the PFOS contaminants within the drinking water that Massachusetts has decided to regulate, starting in 2021. And the MCL, which is the contaminant level of combined for all six of those PFOS components, is at the 20 parts per trillion. I was just talking with Lori the other day and there are no other contaminants that we are required to test for that it were testing that low. At the 20 parts per trillion is something that was not able to detect even just a couple of years ago. But technology has changed, the testing equipment has changed, and we can now detect down to those levels. And so that's why DEP has decided that that's the level in which we should be regulating here in Massachusetts. You want to take over?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so that's the general background on PFOS. And then the next question would be, you know, what we have here in Yarmouth. So we started testing for PFOS in all of our sources. We have 24 wells total, 23 were active. So we tested all of them in April, the first round, found them all to be below 20 parts per trillion. But as the summer progressed, we continued to test and four and five, which is a combined source, came up over the level at 20, it was at 21 in quarter three. And then well 10 got to 23 in quarter four. So as soon as we, and I would just want to reemphasize that as soon as we found out that the wells were over the limit, they were shut down. So they're off now. And then the rest of the wells continued to test below 10 parts per trillion, at least with our latest results. And if anyone wants to review the results, they're on our website, which is listed on the bottom of the screen there. So a big question for everyone would be where did this come from? How can we stop it? The, in the two well, the two wells in question are the three are in the red circles up there. And there's no big, you know, smoking gun source near those wells, like over in Hyannis where they have the firefighting facility or the airport. We don't have anything like that. And their levels were way higher than ours for a point, for a point source like that. One potential cause could be the landfill, which is the green oval kind of in the center of the screen there. Generally speaking, if you're south of Route 6, water, groundwater is moving south. And if you're north of Route 6, groundwater is moving north. So groundwater near the landfill could potentially move south towards those wells. There is a plan to start testing the monitoring wells for the landfill for PFOS, but that has not started yet. That's through Barnstable County and they haven't started testing for PFOS, those monitoring wells yet. So we're, we'll wait for that data to come in to find out if there is any correlation there.
Can I ask a question about the monitoring wells? Are there indeed monitoring wells south of the landfill that can be tested?
There is at least one, I don't know exactly where they are. I know there is one right by wells 10 and 11. So right in the center red circle, there is a monitoring well right in that circle.
There's a series of wells on the, the south side. Whether they're going to be able to give us detailed information about, you know, any kind of plume that might be headed towards wells 10 and 11, that's a, what we'll have to look at, what there are wells monitoring the landfill components that are leaching out of the landfill that are south of the landfill.
Okay. And how many wells do, do we know, range?
There's at least three or four monitoring wells. We do report those to DEP on a regular basis.
And do we test for PFOS in those monitoring wells? Does anybody, or are we waiting for somebody else to start doing that?
We don't, that's what Lori was just talking about.
Barnstable County handles the, the testing for the landfill and they haven't started doing PFOS testing.
They have not, okay.
But it is on their agenda, they do plan to get there.
Okay, so, and I'm assuming that's probably a program that the county's going to be doing for all of the towns, not just Yarmouth, right? Or is that?
I'm not sure, it's related to the landfill.
Okay.
It's my understanding that's the plan, right? They test for contaminants now and that's just another one that they will offer in the future.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So for us, I think the, the more likely situation would be the septic systems. You can see, especially four and five, that's Captain, all those streets that you can see, it's Captain's Village. So it's a lot of houses in there, packed together, a lot of septic systems. And then there's even north of well 10, there's another neighborhood up there. Whereas if you look at some of our other wells, all the pink boxes, there's not as many septic systems near all of those. So there's a good chance that it has to do with what's leaching from the septic systems, from consumer products that we're using every day in our households, that's getting into our drains and.
Have we pretty well defined the groundwater flow in that area where those, where the PFOS is? Do we have good information on how the groundwater is moving now?
Drinking water wells, you have to do an analysis to determine the zone two or the zone of contribution. So we have those analysis, they were done back, you know, when the wells were put in, but the general groundwater pattern should be the same.
For the PFOS that is in that area, just north of Long Pond and south of Captain's Village, is there any discussion at all between us or the county to do more monitoring wells in and around that well field?
We don't have additional wells there now. You know, part of this whole process is to determine next steps and next actions. And some of that will be to increase monitor wells and, and trying to kind of model some of those situations. So those are kind of in the next steps, but currently there aren't many monitor wells in that area.
How much water do we generate from the wells that have been impacted so far? How much, in terms of millions of gallons per day, what generally are they capable of producing?
Four and five, I have a permitted capacity of .86 million gallons per day. And well 10, off the top of my head, I think it's about, well, 10 is .43. So each well is about a point, you know, half a million gallons a day. A little bit less, a little less.
It's a lot of water.
Yeah.
There's a lot of water.
Yes, these are, these are good producers.
Yes, yeah. They're not our biggest, but they are, they're still good.
Important, that's.
They're all important.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all important.
Yeah. So that's kind of our general thought of where it's coming from. So this is where we kind of get into the next step. So we've done with the help of our consultant, Kleinfelder, an evaluation of our water use in the past and what we think our water use will be in the future to determine what, can we live without these wells? Do we need to treat them, what our next steps are going to be? So Kleinfelder looked at our water use from the last 10 years, so 2011 through 2021. And in that time, for some of the years, we sold water to Hyannis, so they took that out. And so, and just to take a step back, I think it's probably easy to understand that wintertime, we're fine, we have plenty of water for the people that are here in the winter. It's the summertime, our maximum days is what they call a max day demand. That's where we're worried about being able to meet demands, so it's the summertime. So our maximum day demand over the, that 10-year period ranged from some years as low as 7.6 was our maximum day and then the highest was 10.69 million gallons per day. And then the average of that is about 8, 8.9 is our average max day demand. And our capacity without wells four, five and 10. So adding up what we have left for permitted capacity is 10.21 MGD. So if you look at that, that doesn't look too bad. Our maximum max day is higher, but on average, we're lower. So it's kind of a, we're kind of in an in-between spot. We want, we need to be prepared for the fact that we could go over our capacity this summer. But if we don't have a drought, we might, we might be okay. It's kind of where, where we're at. So we need to figure out what alternatives make sense moving forward. I just wanted to show this chart, I want to talk about that last part. So this is kind of tricky to look at. So what it is, the squiggly line is our actual daily usage from the wells each day. So you can see the winter months are the kind of more flat lines in the middle and then the summer we peak. So the third peak over is last year. We never sold, we didn't sell any water to Hyannis last year. And it was not particular, there was no drought on Cape Cod. So in that time, our max day was 9.2 and it was on June 28th, which is that little peak that goes right over the red line. And basically the red line is that average of 8, 8.9. The line that's the most important here is the, the blue dashed line. And that line is our capacity without the wells that have PFOS. So last year, we would have been, we would have been okay with those wells. But if you look back to 2020 and 2019, we had days that went over. And that's where, that's where we would be most concerned. 2020 was our highest max day of the 10 years. And that was, we were selling Hyannis and it, there was a drought in 2020, at the end of 2020. So those are, but those are the days that we're concerned about are those max days on a drier year. The other thing to consider is, this is considering having all of our other wells in operation. Any given day, if something goes wrong with a well and it might be down, whether it's a pump problem or a drought, you know, electrical issue, we lose wells during the summer from time to time. So that's one consideration that we need to keep in mind. And then the other thing, long-term, we want to think about is water quality. As you, if you over-pump wells, water quality is degraded. So it's important that the wells rest on a daily basis to, to reduce impacts on the water quality. So long-term, it's not a good idea for us to just over-pump the wells consistently.
Right, the Cape has a history of wells that have been over-pumped. And most of the, in, in the lower Cape towns that I've been involved in where this has been an issue, it's been mostly the salt intrusion that gets brought into the aquifer. Do we potentially have a sodium salt intrusion issue here that we need to be concerned about?
I haven't seen.
Yeah, it's something to be aware of, but because of the distance from the ocean, for the most part, it's not much of an issue. I think some of the outer Cape communities, their wells are, you know, much closer to the water.
Right.
We're a little closer to inland. That's why when you see the, the zones of contribution map, it's kind of the interior two-thirds of Yarmouth, it's that protected area, because ours are more clustered towards the, you know, main body of the landmass, if you will, versus the outer edges.
Well, that's good to know.
So getting to our alternatives, we basically have outlined four, four alternatives. Add treatment at four and five, because they're bigger than, more, larger source than 10. Look to our interconnections. Reauthorize well number nine, which had been turned off due to PCE contamination in 2013. And then I'll turn, I'll kind of alternatively, rather than increasing production, we can look at decreasing demand by instituting some water conservation measures. So just to talk about four and five a little bit, their combined capacity is .86, which if you take the, that would kind of cover us and get us from our, our current capacity without the wells over our past max day. And one thing we looked at was potentially some temporary treatment units, rather than building a whole new building. A less expensive approach would be to take some treatment systems, like the blue containers shown here, and put them in a, a storage container. And that's kind of either, it can be temporary, it can be permanent, but it may be not used in the winter, because it wouldn't be heated. So looking at those options, it lays out some of the prices there for rental. Can be up to close to a half a million dollars just to rent the equipment and then over a million to buy it. And there is more to it, we have to look at water quality and how it all works together. But the main problem there is that, that those tanks have at least a six-month lead time right now. So there, we're not going to have it for this summer, no matter what, even if we had a million dollars to throw at it right now. So that, that's kind of takes that out of the equation, at least for this summer, but may still be an option long-term.
It's a very attractive option for longer term, once we can deal with some of these lead time issues.
Yeah. So our next potential option would be to look at our interconnections. Right now, we don't have any way to receive water from our two neighbors, Hyannis or Dennis. Not simple, it's not a simple connection. And Hyannis, this is the setup of how we feed Hyannis, but it doesn't go backwards. We would have to, because of the pressures in their system and the pressures in ours, we would have to actually put in some piping, kind of draw from their distribution system, come kind of force water back. kind of draw from their distribution system, come kind of force water back through this piping that's shown here. So it would take some work to make that happen. Kleinfelder estimated would be about a hundred thousand dollars worth of work to get that done. And there's also the question of water quality and combining our water quality with theirs. They, their water is heavily treated because they have PFOS problems. So their water quality is a little bit different than ours. They also chlorinate and we don't. So those are things that would have to be considered to make this happen. Make sure we're not going to cause any problems in our system by bringing in different water.
Plus they would probably charge for the water too.
Yes, that's the last part is we'd have to work out some kind of municipal, intermunicipal agreement. And I'm not sure if that would, yep. Because they're spending so much money on their water right now, if they would want to be part of that or not, I don't know exactly. But, you know, water superintendent to water superintendent, they're like, of course we'll help you if you need help, but.
No, I think it becomes a fact. I mean, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but it becomes a factor in the analysis.
Right. So again, I don't think we'd have enough time to work out an intermunicipal agreement in the next few months. Though again, that could be a more long-term solution. Dennis is the other option. With Dennis, we have hydrants, we don't have a physical connection with Dennis. We have hydrant to hydrant connect potential. So you can see here, there's one of their hydrants and one of ours. And if we wanted to connect to Dennis, we would have to put a pump in between the two hydrants and pump water from one system to the other. Again, we haven't, we know even less about Dennis's water quality. Kleinfelder works for Hyannis, so we had a little bit of a information there. So we'd have to, you know, really get in touch with Dennis Water District. And again, the question there would be an intermunicipal agreement there, Water District. I'm not sure how that would work out. But again, another long-term option, if that turns out to be our, our better option.
What was the estimated cost of that option? Do you know?
Oh, we didn't actually do that. We'd have to, you know, get a pumping system. I have rented pumping systems in the past. It can add up pretty quickly, but.
Yeah. And I think, you know, beyond just a pumping system, I don't know that we'd want to have an overground connection for any length of time. Some of these agreements or systems were put in place when we had less mature water systems that were concerned about fire flows. And so you get a higher hydrant to hydrant, you know, put that fire out, disconnect it. But a long-term solution for potable drinking water, that's probably not the best option. So we would need to do some kind of underground vault connection. It would need to be designed and permitted. It would be much more expensive than the Hyannis connection.
Yeah. And so another alternative would be to look at well number nine. Well, number nine has a withdrawal rate, permitted withdrawal rate of point two MGD, just similar, similar to that of four and five. But it was shut down in 2013 due to PCE contamination. The most recent tests, we have five monitoring wells around well number nine. So if you look at the map, the green dot in the middle is well number nine. And the red dots all around are the monitoring wells that, those are Yarmouth Water Monitoring Wells. They did three rounds of PC testing on those wells and all 15 samples came back non, or 14 samples came back non-detect. And one came back at point five five parts per billion and the limit is five parts per billion. So it seems like the PC plume may have passed, but we haven't tested the actual well yet. Similarly, in 2019, we tested those monitoring wells for PFOS and found the well closest to the actual well had a PFOS of point fourteen point three. The one way at the top had four and the, all the others were non-detect. So that data is kind of all over the place. So we really need to test the well itself. What's the?
Which one was the highest? Or where do you think that one's coming from?
Where is it located?
Yeah, which, which one of the?
The one to the, just to the right of well nine.
Yeah, just to the east there.
Yeah. So on North Main Street?
Yeah. Oh, the well number nine, yes, sorry, is on North Main Street. I'm sorry, should have.
But the testing for the high is over there.
Right.
Closest, yeah, closer to North Main Street, yes.
And the three, there are three other wells, six, seven and eight are just south of there, shown on the map. Those have all come back up non, non-detect for PFOS and PCs. They've been fine. So let's say it's that way. So this is a promising potential. The monitoring well seemed to indicate that well nine might be okay. And you're probably wondering, well, why, why, why haven't we tested well nine? The problem is that over the years with it being off, it's, the parts have been stolen for other wells. So we've been missing various parts. So we're working on just getting it back up and running. And we would run it to waste. I just want to make that clear to you as I'm pumping into the system. It'll be running to waste until we get, you know, all the tests back and make sure it's authorized by DEP. But so we would test it for PFOS, PC, and then just general water quality and all the required testing for MSEP if, if it looks good. And then we find out if it needs treatment, how much treatment there, there could cost, would that be different than four and five? PC would add another layer of treatment. So maybe it wouldn't make sense if that's still an issue. But at any rate, when, once we have results for well nine, we can reevaluate, reevaluate our alternatives and which direction we should go long term. So the last alternative is the, rather than increase production to instead we'll redo, reduce demand. So this figure is straight from our SCADA system. It's not the best. I can't control what it looks like. So sorry for its appearance. But the lines, basically this is June 28th, which was our peak day in 2021. The lines are tank levels. So the blue lines are Sandy Pond Tank, red is German Hill and green is Prospect Hill. And what you're seeing here is basically the daily trend of what's happening with the tanks. And what we see in the summer is on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we have a lot of water pumped out for irrigation. In the blue square there, that's the hours from 3:00 AM to just after 8:00 AM. And what you can see there, the red line is the easiest one to see. Basically the tanks were full overnight. They started to empty. At one point they hit the mark where the wells kick on. And that's where that like little flat piece is. So and then around 4:00 AM, we start, the, the wells start losing the battle and the tanks start to empty. And then by 8:00 AM, the demands decrease. And finally, the, the wells start to win and start increasing the level in the storage tanks. That amount of water used in that time from the emptying of the tanks and the amount of water being pumped is almost three million gallons of water. That in four hours, on a winter day, we don't even use three million gallons in the whole town. So we're using a lot of water in that short period of time. And part of that is definitely that there's more people here in the summer, but they're not up at 4:00 AM. Vacationers are not taking showers at 4:00 AM. You know, that's not what the uses, the uses.
Get that parking. Get there early.
So that's what we're seeing. So if, and we see this very strong on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. It seems like everybody has their irrigation set to the same day in Yarmouth. So if we can start to look at maybe some, putting out some more information to our customers, maybe we can kind of help with that curve there. Just a little bit of information on the measures in general. The town bylaw does allow restrictions on water use for water supply emergencies. And that's something to think for the future is currently our Water Management Act permit, which is our permit that determines how much we can pump from every well. It has expired and it's been expired for some time. At some point, their DEP is gonna, you know, reissue our permit and most likely it will have water conservation measures required. These are, this chart shows the requirements that are, are in the Drought Management Task Force document. And it is what Orleans, who had an issue, their permit was issued in 2018, this is what they have to do. So when the state declares a mild drought, they have to go to one day per week watering. And then if it gets up to a significant drought, the next step, it, there's no irrigation at all. So that may be coming in our future. So it may be just something to think about as we form our conservation measures. So right now, we are working on, we have a drought management plan, but we want to update that to be more of a water resiliency plan. Because not always our issue is going to be around a drought. It may just be loss of wells or contamination like we're dealing with now. So we want to make a, like a more robust plan for dealing with water shortages. And to start, what we were thinking of for possible conservation measures would look something like this, where we would always have a seasonal water conservation advisory, a voluntary set of restrictions on our customers. They, just to try and get people in the, the mindset of restrictions with more restrictions, more prohibitive restrictions as we, you know, have a more of a drought or more of a problem with our system. So just to have some things started to, to set up with steps for people to become accustomed to it. And these are very, these are some, these are in line with those state requirements. Once you hit the lawn watering restriction, that's basically a mild drought restriction. And we hope to, in the resiliency plan, take this and kind of lay out what triggers each step, at least for Yarmouth, until we're told we have to do it a different way through the state. They may have different triggers when we get a new permit.
So if I could add, if, if you supported the seasonal water conservation advisory, which is the light green up there, it would help to address what Lori just described with regards to the irrigation on Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays. We would get people in a pattern of if you're on the odd side of the street, you water at the odd number of days, even side, even number of days. Might help to balance out those demands that happen on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If we can get people kind of thinking about that. Again, it's voluntary, but at least we see pretty good compliance in other communities with voluntary. And it does help. We've talked to some communities like Chatham, you did talk with them about their program. We're seeing a lot of communities that do implement on a pretty much a yearly basis, the voluntary conservation measures, which will help with the demand on the system.
And then in addition to that, as the water department, we can start to be more proactive in encouraging conservation. So we are, we are members of Water Sense, the EPA Water Conservation Program. So they have some graphics like this one that we can start to use and push out through social media, just to try and get people to think about it more. The sprinkler spruce up one is to try and get people to make sure they don't have their sprinklers leaking, which we do find with our metering, our water meters, some people have leaks and they don't realize it. So it can help them and help us with some of these things. And the other thing would be to encourage people to use our water portal where they can sign up for alerts if their meter is reading a leak or reading higher than expected. It's just another way. I think a lot of people don't realize how much water is used when they irrigate. And something like this might help them to just kind of, you know, tie a gallonage to each time that they run their sprinkler and how often they run their sprinklers. Yeah. So just in summary, right now we are getting well number nine running. That's our first step to get that data so that we can then make a better decision for the long term. As far as what's the best solution? Should we put treatment at four, five, nine? That would be the most important is to know what's going on at well nine. And then for right now, to get through this summer, particularly if we start to see drought conditions, we would like to try and put in place some sort of water conservation restrictions, similar to what was in that chart.
Very good. Board members, I'm going to start on the other end with Selectman Horgan.
There was a lot of information, good information. Thank you very much. Okay. So on the wells that have been closed, testing has, has been continued even though the wells themselves are closed.
Yes.
Okay. On well nine, do you have any kind of a timeline in terms of when we might expect to have some information as to whether or not we can, we can to open that up?
So I would hope to be able, hope to be able to take samples by the beginning of May. It takes us a month to get PFOS results back. So it would probably not be till June that we would have good information on well nine.
The, the tanks that you talked about, say we were to purchase them, are they movable or are they permanent? Once you set them up somewhere, they?
The treatment?
Yeah.
Those ones that we were looking at were temporary, they moveable.
Okay.
You can do it both ways though. Lori earlier referenced Hyannis, which has a fixed system. And a lot of them have decided that, you know, that's the kind of the way to, to deal with it for them. Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills has a, a similar system to what Lori showed with the, the containers. And that's somewhat portable and can also be seasonal, can be taken offline.
Yeah. Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills only uses it in the summer.
We can come back, Dan.
No, I'm just going through my notes. Do we have a way of knowing who has irrigation systems in the town?
Not a good system because unlike other communities that I'm familiar with where a permit's required, we don't have a permit for that. So we don't have good documentation, but it is fairly easy to review the data and see high usage residential customers. That's not just going to be showers. It's, it's going to be irrigation is the highest water use for some of those in the summertime. You can also see that the trends between what's the difference in water usage in the wintertime versus the summertime irrigation season as well. So you can deduce some of that, but we don't have a good solid record.
Right. Yeah. I could look at a specific address and look at their hourly usage and see if they're definitely watering. But I, to pull that out on a large scale, like all the customers would be, I don't know, I wouldn't know how to do, get that.
Imagine if we ever go down that road where we're asking for voluntary adjustments to the odd even type of scenario. Getting that type of data would probably be important so that we can target the people that are actually utilizing the irrigation. Generally speaking, I'm kind of in favor of a dual approach of trying to address the concerns that we have at our wells, but also beginning to seriously look at conservation measures and making them a more formal part of our town plan. So I, I guess what I'd be hoping for is a plan of some sort from water DPW, you know, in terms of concrete steps going forward in terms of how, how we get this in place. Most importantly, getting the wells up and running to handle the, the large flows that come in the summertime and giving us an ability to deal with the wells that go down from time to time. We need that flexibility, I would imagine. So, you know, certainly having all of our wells or as many as possible activated, I, I would think is in our best interest. And so we'd need some concrete information in terms of costs, estimates in terms of treatment and timelines in terms of, you know, when we might get those realized that, that type of operation. So as much, you've given us some great information, but I, I would imagine that we'd need some real concrete information in terms of conservation measures that are reasonable, but certainly taking us in that direction of, of getting people in the town more aware of water usage and trying to reduce it. And then on the well side, getting ourselves in our best position possible. I really would be reluctant to be looking at options where we were looking to other towns. Expense, just the negotiations, all of that to me would be difficult. And, you know, they may find themselves in a situation, in a drought situation or with PFOS and whatnot. So I don't think that we can necessarily look to our neighbors to, to solve this problem, bless you. As much as we maybe should be looking to ourselves to make sure that we're in our best position to provide good potable water for our customers and our neighbors. But I appreciate the presentation and I guess I'm just looking for more guidance in terms of best next steps forward.
Okay. Thank you. Selectman Stone.
And thank you. It was very, very interesting and informative presentation, very well conceived. And I, I thank you both for that. If, if the situation became dire enough that you had to have an odd even rationing system of water for lawns, which reminds me, believe it or not, of the days when they did that with gasoline in the Carter administration. How would, how would you enforce that? I mean, what would be?
Yeah, they would have.
I mean, some of these people with the pristine lawns are kind of fanatical about how their lawns look.
The way the bylaws right now, there is, there's the fine situation, though someone who's paying that much for their water problem doesn't care about the fines. So. who's paying that much for their water probably doesn't care about the fines. So, so in, when I worked in Franklin, Franklin had a one day ban every, every year, always. It was written into their Water Management Act permit. So we did go around when we were in dire streets and needed people to conserve and would drive around, send the water patrols out and find the people who were watering at night and just send them warnings, because a lot of times it's just education, they don't know. Most people would then change their habits based on the warning. As far as finding, in my time there, we never find anyone because that didn't seem to be effective. But it would have to be a discussion among the town who actually is going to enforce that, I think.
Is there any distinction between like older sprinkler systems and newer ones in terms of efficiency, like there is in heat and gas and things like that, or they all just use a lot of water?
I think they all just use a lot of water by design. What I will say, though, and one of the things we do want to encourage use, if not at some point in the future maybe required, is a rain gauge. So right now, I think that's very few people that use that because it's not required. Some of the communities that I'm familiar with, as I mentioned before, that have permits, will have it written right into your permit, here's your permit for your irrigation, but you need to install a rain gauge. And so people are in the habit in other communities, and here it's not been required. And so I don't think there's a lot of them out there, but a rain gauge is important because it also, it does conserve water, because you don't need to irrigate when it's raining out, but it also, it's the, it's the visual representation to people driving around that are very conscious of, you know, wanting to conserve water, seeing their neighbor irrigating in the rain bothers some people. And so we'll, we'll hear about that, but it's not required at this point, so.
I see that a lot. It's almost comical, you're going down the street and it's raining and you see these sprinklers going off, and so what's that all about? Does a rain gauge have to be installed on the system at the time the sprinkler system is put in, or can it be added after the fact? And if it can be added after the fact, is it, is there much of an expense to that?
It can be added after, and the expenses, I don't know if you have any information on that, but I don't think it's terribly expensive. It's only a fraction of the cost compared to a whole system. It's just a sensor that just, you know, shuts the valve off so that it doesn't irrigate on its regular schedule if it's sensing moisture. It's pretty straightforward.
Actually, I happened to talk to my neighbor today at the bus stop, and he has a, he just added to his sprinkler system a software program that costs, it costs $200 to install it, and it looks at the weather for the next week, the temperatures, the wind, if it's going to rain, and it determines how much to water. So there, you know, for $200, he's saving, because we're on a well at my own house, so he's saving money on electricity, so to him it's worth it. So it depends on what, how sophisticated you want to get, but it sounds like even the most sophisticated one is $200.
Those in the know that talk about watering lawns and people in gardening, landscaping, stuff like that, they say instead of these frequent waterings, you should water less often, but deep water. But on the other side of the equation, we have very sandy soil that probably doesn't retain. So is there, is there any adjustments people can make in watering their lawns that take those kind of considerations into account, or, or is deep watering prohibited by the sandy soil that we have down here?
I think it's a mix depending on, you know, what topsoil you have, and some people have, you know, better quality topsoil that might retain the moisture, you know, better than somebody that might just have a Cape Cod lawn that's very, you know, sandy in nature. So I think it really is site specific, but it is something to certainly be aware of. And I think generally you need less water on your lawn than people think you do. It seems like almost every summer season I'm talking with somebody that is, you know, calling in to report a water leak on their property, and it's just that they've over irrigated their lawn. That's why it's mushier or moist in the, in the grass, you know, versus, you know, an actual leak. So it happens pretty regularly, I think, to people over irrigate.
The rule of thumb is one inch per week, but how that translates to your sprinkler, I'm not sure.
That's what's recommended, an inch of water per week. You had mentioned, and I think it's, you said Franklin, that they had a day where they prohibited watering, and I'm assuming in drought...
They can only water one day per week.
Oh, they can only water one day a week?
That's a much more restrictive program than...
I thought you meant you were taking one day away that they couldn't water.
Yeah, people could only water one day, the idea being that they should water that one inch that one day and have be done watering.
Okay. We don't supply water to Barnstable anymore, do we? We were supplying them for a while. When did we stop doing that?
October of 2020.
In 2020? Because we did it for what, four or five years, was it?
I think we had that intermunicipal agreement for four or five years, but they used significant amounts, probably for a good three of those four or five years.
Okay. I have a lot of other questions, but I'll pass to the other members.
Okay. Selectman Post.
So can you tell me why it takes one month to get PFOS results? What is the barrier there? That seems like an awful long time, and, you know, that data would be extremely important much faster.
But it, there's only a certain number of labs in the country that test for PFOS, and so our, our samples have to be shipped there. And then those labs are overwhelmed with PFOS testing, from what I understand, and that's the timeframe that it takes to get it back.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, the, the technology or these types of high quality testing equipment didn't exist just a couple of years ago. And so it's only a few labs that actually have the equipment that can detect down to these low levels.
Nothing in the state, nothing locally, nothing in Massachusetts.
Well, nothing on the Cape for sure. We're hoping that the county lab will be up and running at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one of the regional project proposals for ARPA funds, is to make investments in this type of testing equipment so that the county can provide more support to the towns.
Good, that's good to hear, because, you know, it's hard to act and keep the public drinking water safe when you're a month later before you even get a result. But I'm glad that we've started this, because everyone's talking about it, and, you know, knowledge is power. I, I personally think that we need a conservation plan, whether we enact it or not. I think we need to have one in place. We did not when we had, when we had the drought the last time. It was my understanding that we really didn't even have the ability to take any actions because we didn't have something to enact. Is that, is that true?
Well, I think as water commissioners, as long as we can pull a meeting together, you can act pretty quickly. But with that said, it's good to have a policy in place so that you know that there's certain triggers that would allow for that action.
Is there, is there a public process in having one of those? Is there required advertising or anything like that, or just the water commissioners can, can put these policies in place?
You can put these policies in place. I would suggest that we have, you know, a campaign or notification of the public like you do for most of your, you know, significant policy implementations, but I don't think it's, there's a, kind of a posting requirement, if you will.
Okay. You know, I, I think like Dan, that there's, there's steps, obviously, I think that the number nine well is the most probably attractive option if we can really determine that it's safe as, as a first step. But I also think that in conjunction with that, we should have, and even if it's not enacted, we should have some type of policy that we start to discuss with, with the public. When you talked about the other towns having permits for their irrigation, what kind of permit is that? And what towns do, do, what's the, what's the, other than the town having knowledge and probably being able to communicate them, what, what would the purpose of that be?
I think the purpose would be to primarily communicate the requirements, rain gauge being a big one, saying, hey, systems in Yarmouth, we expect them to, you know, perform this way. We recommend, you know, odd even watering, you know, so that at least when the system is set up, there's guidelines to go by. I think the reason why we have a lot of Monday, Wednesday, Friday watering is just because the installers go out and they just set them all the same way and just do the next house the same way. So if we had guidelines for installers, that's kind of what the permit would serve as.
Okay, so the, the permit is for the installer and not for the end user, or what, what's the actual type of permit? I'm just wondering if that is something that, as, as an option that town would want to consider? Is it, is it a water permit, an installation?
Yep, it's an installation permit through the water department.
Okay. And so now a plumber can come and do that without having to pull any, any permits whatsoever for irrigation here? Okay, all right.
Another piece of information that would be good to have for that is all irrigation systems are supposed to have a backflow device.
Yeah.
Which technically are supposed to be tested, but we don't, we don't know who has irrigation to make sure they're tested properly or that they're working. So that would be another one we could be, if we had, if we knew who had them, we would know who to reach out to to make sure that the backflow devices are working properly.
Yeah, I think the backflow and the, and the rain, I mean, are no brainers.
That could be considered a public health issue, too, not, not having a backflow device.
Right. I don't personally water my lawn because I don't want to mow it, so I really don't understand, I don't understand the mentality of people who do that.
You save gas in the lawn mower, too.
I have no interest in letting my, my lawn grow. But thank you very much, there's a lot of great information in this, your presentation was great, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Selectman Smith.
I think permits should be required and backflow devices definitely be installed. I went to a small school in Worcester in the 1969, their backflow didn't work, and approximately 200 students got fecal contamination from a bad backflow. Moving on from that, Captain's Village, when I was a kid, was a swamp before, before the homes were built there.
Say that again?
Captain's Village was a swamp before, before Davenport Company built a lot of the houses there. So a lot of the septic systems are sitting in the water table, and the same within West Yarmouth and, and Greater Bass River, too. I mean, the, the water table is, you know, this far underground. I know that West Yarmouth and Bass River aren't necessarily a problem with our, with our wells, but they have the same issue. Is there, is there anything in, in the water treatment plant that we're planning on to take care of places like, like Captain's Village fairly early on?
Waste water plant?
Yes.
It is a phase in the plan, but I guess it depends on what you mean by fairly early on. It's not the first phase, in fact, I don't even think it's until maybe phase four. We do need to have discussions with the Water Resource Advisor Committee about the phasing, and that did come up at the meeting even this week about kind of what that looks like. We're, we're pretty comfortable with phase one, but those future phases need to be, have some discussion.
And is there, is there interim discussion on, on systems that fail in Captain's Village? That, you know, that they need to be raised and leach fields improved and, and the like? I'm, I'm not trying to pick on Captain's Village, but you, you did, you did mention it that, that it is potentially some of, some of the issues that caused some of the problems, potentially caused some of the problems with the wells that are offline.
Right, you do bring up a good point. The Title V code that was enacted in 1995 does allow for greater separation from groundwater for newer systems. So systems installed after 1995 are going to have more protection than the previous ones that could be much closer to groundwater. So that's an ongoing situation, somebody has to replace their septic system, it's going to be upgraded, and it's going to meet the current codes, which is a good thing. Certainly sewer would be better, but it's, at least meeting the current code for Title V is better than maybe how it was originally installed.
You, very quickly, Lori, you've talked about severe drought, light drought, and you said last year we didn't have a drought. I, I live on a pond and it was down probably 24 inches by the end of the summer. To me, that seems like a pretty good sized drought.
So there was no drought declared by the drought task force, this Massachusetts drought task force on Cape Cod. We might have had a dry summer, but it wasn't declared a drought.
Okay, so...
Towards the end of the summer, we were getting close.
Yeah, very close.
Okay, so...
Maybe even in October, they maybe did call it a drought, but by the time summer was over...
It, it didn't, didn't matter at that point. I, I, several folks on the board have talked about, about water saving in the odd even days. I, I think that's a, that's an excellent suggestion that we, that we put in place. And, and also, you know, if we do have a policy, if we do get a severe drought, that we can act, act quickly. And, you know, if, if global warming continues, and we, we do have, have the long, really dry summers that, that we, that we seem to be having over the last few years, I, I think we're going to see more drought conditions coming. So I, I think if, if we've got, if we've got everything in our quiver, we should be ready to use them. And some towns, you can't even get a permit to put in a water system, you know, irrigation system, because, because of that, what I'm talking pretty much, you know, Truroan Province town. And I, I think it would be a great idea if, if we know who has them, and then that would be a lot, lot easier to control, and not, not to put another, another impediment against somebody, you know, trying to do something on their property, but just, just so we know, because it, it affects the entire community, it's not just that one, one homeowner. I, I think your, your report was, was very good, well thought out, and very much appreciate the time and the effort that you've put together on this, on this, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the board, any other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
By all means, Selectman Stone.
If you had a, a serious drought condition and you were to go to an odd even system, what would your rough estimate be in terms of the amount of water that would be conserved? And I'm not talking about gallonage, but maybe in percentages, what kind of recovery would you be able to get if, on a, on an odd even system? Could you save, for example, 20% of the water usage to 35%?
Well, the, the graph that Lori showed earlier that showed within that, you know, kind of irrigation window of 3 million gallons getting used, if that was, you know, one and a half million gallons on a Monday, one and a half million gallons on a Tuesday, spread out throughout the week, it would be much more manageable. When she showed that graph with the tank levels, and the reason we measure tank levels is because that's with all the wells going, and it still can't keep up and the tank levels are dropping, that's a bad scenario, because if it drops too far, all of a sudden, there's the potential for people not to have water when they need that. So this is the, the chart that I was referring to. So just the odd even, the idea behind the odd even is to really spread it out throughout the week and not have that kind of drop happening within the tanks.
No, yeah, that's right, because the less, if the tanks drop lower, we have less water to fight fires. If there's a fire on a day when we're at the bottom of the curve there, we might not have as much as we need potentially, you know, that's important to try and keep them full.
The other, the other, the other question I have is, and this is picking up on an issue that Tracy raised, do you think it would be beneficial to have a public forum and talk about possible remedial conservation measures in the event of a drought so that one, we have at least a general plan in mind, and two, to have an educational component so that people won't be surprised or shocked when, as and if it happens?
I think the short answer is yes, and that's, I think what we're hearing from the board, that you're supportive of us coming up with a policy and presenting that to you so we have that information. And I think if it's, if we want to have more discussion beyond just with the board, we certainly can have some outreach sessions, just like we've done with the wastewater plan.
Thank you. I think one way to sort of kick things off would be to actually have a proposed set of measures to begin the process. I think it's worth us having a public discussion about whether or not we go to a voluntary, this seasonal water conservation advisory, or if we take the added measures that are a little bit more restrictive and just begin the dialogue. I look at the numbers, I look at what's happening with PFAS. We're, we're rolling the dice for this summer. That's what we're doing. We do not, we cannot, right now, based on the information that's been provided to us, we really can't guarantee, I mean, there's never really any kind of guarantees when it comes to water, we all know that, but we're in a risky situation. That's the reality of it. That's the reality of it. I, I think we can't, we can't not do anything for this coming season. We, we have to either do a seasonal water conservation advisory with some of the other measures that other board members have talked about. We at least have to take some action for this season. I don't see any, any other way out of it. The equipment to do treatment on PFAS is not going to be available for us, so for us to think that we might be able to get a well online, that's, that's fantasy land. So all we can do is pray, right? All we can do is pray and hope that this summer, we don't... All we can do is pray and hope that this summer, we don't experience drought conditions. And given the climate that we're in, given what's happening, that's a, that's a pretty risky scenario. So I, I think from my point of view, I think we as a board of water commissioners need to provide some guidance to the water department in terms of what actions we can take this season. I think at the very least, the measures that are outlined and greened at least need to be on the table for public discussion. And I think some of the other measures that you have suggested in terms of rain gauges on irrigation systems and other measures, we, we need to put those on the table. I, I, I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't think we have a choice at this point. I really don't. That's where I'm coming from. So what I'd like to see, if the board is comfortable with asking the water department to sort of prepare for public notice and public discussion, a series of measures centered around the suggestions that you had come up with and other board members, and at least a seasonal water conservation advisory. I think it's the most responsible thing we can do. To not do anything would be irresponsible, in my judgment. So I'm anxious to hear if other board members have any comments on that.
I'd agree with that. I think it's a good place to start. I think that number one, you use the time to educate people. And I think that's extremely important. And, you know, listen to the public's input. But at some point in time, I think it's extremely important that you at least have something in place to utilize in case of an emergency. And we continue to work on, on, on the rest of it aside. But, you know, perhaps, perhaps even look at what that permitting process might be like, a fee advertised for it, and at least listen to what the public has to say. Because I think the rain gauges and, you know, the rain gauges and the backflows, if, if that's something that's a public health thing, why aren't we doing it? I mean, conservation aside, that's the first I've, I've heard that. So, you know, you can't do much other plumbing without a permit for, there's a reason, right? I mean, what we don't want to do is put permits in place. That's why I asked what the rationale was behind it. We don't want to put permits in place just to be a burden, right? That's not our, our goal. A permit should pay for a service. And the service should be that it's installed properly. So that in itself, for, like I said, for public safety is one thing. But at the same time, it gives you the opportunity to, to talk to them about the rain, the rain sensor and other options. And at the same time, you can give them, I'm not sure what happens to the people who already have it in place now, but for new customers, talk about, talk about what we're, we're experiencing. I think that a lot of people wouldn't know. You know, we've had a, we've had a very duplicit and strong water system here for a very, very long time. PFAS, it's, and it's not specific to just us, but PFAS is affecting all of our water systems, especially on the Cape. We have a solar zoographer. And it's a very, very expensive thing to treat. So I think we're going to educate people.
Thank you, Trey. Selectman Smith?
I agree. We, we should be, we should be ready. And you put it, if we don't do anything, we're being irresponsible.
Anybody else?
I agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan?
Same. I'm absolutely willing to begin looking at these measures. And to be honest with you, the, every other day, when I'm out walking in the morning, the same houses are on every day. It's not, it's not every other day. So.
Sometimes twice a day.
You know, it'd be great, I think you'd see a decrease if we went to every other day and we required that or suggested it strongly. Great suggestions. I, I think we put, quantify, put it into a plan and we began that discussion with the town members.
Yeah, I, I do. I think it's time to draft, draft the measures that we're going to take for this coming summer. And then with that, like, again, some of the other suggestions that were presented here, let's go over a draft and then begin the process of getting it adopted. And so let's, let's come up with a draft proposal to review with the board for this summer. And we have to make it clear to people that if we don't meet certain water conservation goals, we may have to take more drastic steps this summer. And we need to at least explain to people what those might entail.
So identifying goals would be important.
Yeah. I mean, the reality is, is, you know, what, what, what I, what, this, this chart right here, you know, the, the peaks, I mean, we're, it's not like we have a lot of wiggle room here. There's not, there's not a cushion here. We have a drought, we're in trouble. So let's try to do the best we can to get ahead of it. Let's see if we can figure out a way to provide a certain degree of reduction in the usage so we're out of the red zone, we're out of the danger zone. Because that's where we are. That's where we're headed in the danger zone. And we, we can't, I would hate to see us in a situation where the drought conditions this summer do occur, they're serious, and then we're not prepared. So we just can't afford to do that. So I look forward to having the, our water team come back to the board almost immediately after town meeting with a proposal. And we can begin the process of a public hearing.
Right.
Immediately after that.
For conservation, I think you've been very clear. Would you also like us to explore the idea with regards to the irrigation permit?
I think that's.
Or maybe something for a little bit later?
I think it's worth exploring and having at least a conversation with the board about what that might entail. I mean, I think Selectman Stone, in his Q and A, flagged some issues in terms of the issues of who's going to enforce, how it's going to be done. I think you need some time to think through that. And we need to, I mean, we have to be mindful that adopting any measures will require some enforcement. And we need to be prepared to deal with that question. So.
Joe has something he wants to say, Mr. Chairman.
Sometimes have a plumbing permit just for the backflow preventer so that they cover that and the irrigation system is a different permit.
Okay. The question will be is what kind of notice is needed to make, create that requirement? We'll need to give them time to look at that, as well as the, the rain gauge. Maybe that could be done through some other kind of permit that's already in place. But we want to give you the time to at least research how some of these relatively simple measures could be adopted and what that might entail in terms of enforcement. There may be things that you might suggest, but upon further reflection, might be a little bit problematic until you're prepared to have the proper staff and resources to follow up on this stuff. So you're hearing, you're hearing, I think, I'd like to think, you're hearing a very strong message from the board that we, we need to do something this summer. And you've heard of, we've had a variety of ideas discussed. I think we're looking for at least what makes sense in terms of a first step.
Are there any water conservation grants out there that can help us offset any expenses? Like, you know, giving our residents the, the rain, the rain gauge and helping with that conservation?
I think we'll have to look into that. I'm not sure.
I've been some in the past, but I don't know if there are any active.
I mean, that would really resolve a lot of it if you're putting a financial burden on somebody. But if we can come up with a grant that would help offset that, that would be, that would be good too.
We could also do some, you know, kind of self grants as well, if that's something the board wanted to explore.
But can you quantify what the savings is, what the savings would be? Like, you know, how many we estimate are out there? How many don't have the gauge? What, what the real savings could be to us? As opposed to connecting, buying, filtering? You know, maybe it's, maybe it's valuable to us to grant some of these as, in addition to some of our other restrictions. But it'd be interesting to know if it's, maybe it's something that's valuable.
Right. I just know that there are some systems out there that'll, you know, give out low flow showerheads and things like that. So anything we can do to promote water conservation, I think, is something worth looking at.
Well, I, I think we're going to have to get, we're going to have to get into the business of fairly substantial water conservation. I think that's the reality of it. What you need to be thinking about is how to build out that program, how much it might cost. There may very well be grants out there for it. I know in years past, the state would periodically come up with grants for water conservation. But usually those were during times when there'd be like water emergencies or serious water situations. But I, I would as, you know, as one commissioner, Selectman, I'd be very supportive of having a portion of water revenues allocated to underwrite certain conservation measures. It only makes sense. We're, we're not going to be adding, I mean, we're not adding new wells in Yarmouth, I don't think. I think what.
We need to look at, but it doesn't happen right away. With 24, there's only limited space too.
Yeah. And just sort of for everyone's benefit, make it clear how long it takes to get a new well online. It's not, doesn't happen overnight. You're talking about at least three, four years of analysis permitting and all sorts of work. So no new wells, wells are not going to show up overnight. So we're basically have to make the best with what we've got. And right now, we're in a, we're in a sort of a period of weakness because we've got these contamination issues. So we look forward to your recommendations on what we're going to do for this season.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.